Great, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and apologies for the late start. It's a little bit after four o'clock. And I will move us into the work session. I'll begin by reading the opportunities for the public to access and participate in the hybrid meeting are posted on the Alamo County website and the Planning Commission homepage and on the Alamo County calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters for which comments from the public will be received. So with that, I'll ask for the role.
Okay, Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Bivins?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Claiborne?
Here.
Mr. Missile?
Here.
Mr. Carizana?
Here.
Ms. Firehawk?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We have a full house, so we've established a quorum. And with that, we will move directly into the work session, CPA 2021-2 AC44 DA Land Use Policies. And I may be stealing some of staff's thunder here, but I was just informed, and I think this is very helpful to give sort of some context, is we're going to be really kind of looking at these work sessions moving forward. And staff, correct me if I'm wrong here, really in three main categories. One is, we're going to hear a recap of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Commissioner Bivins, for that idea. And that'll be, I think, very helpful for us. So this will be, again, consistent moving forward. We'll then hear the content, the subject matter for the day, the specific work session items. And then, at the end, I would appreciate it if everybody could be thinking like this. What would be most helpful to staff would be to provide them with the general direction of the commission. So when you're making your comments, try to make them as closely aligned with the questions that we receive from staff as possible. And then, at the end, I'll try to, with everyone's help, provide an idea of the general direction of the commission, if that makes sense. Sound good? All right, staff, we'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Tanya Schwarzenberger with Alamo County Community Development as a planning manager, here to update you on the development areas land use chapter of the comprehensive plan. This afternoon, we'll go through this agenda, which will, as Fred mentioned, summary of the board feedback that we heard on October 16th. We'll go through a few of the community input themes that we've heard thus far on the topic. We'll review the future land use map and categories, activity and employment centers, and then we'll go through the upcoming steps or calendar. The, this right here is the structure of the draft development land use area, sorry, draft development areas land use chapter that is currently on the website, and you all should have a draft. Today, we'll be focusing on the future land use categories map and the activity centers, and we'll be saving the discussion on the goal statement, objectives, and actions for the next time. To start off with the board feedback that we heard on the growth management policy, at their work session, the board agreed with the commission's previous comments on the importance of addressing the barriers and challenges associated with being a welcoming community, especially related to housing affordability. The board also agreed with the commission and community input to incorporate language into the growth management policy statement on the importance of protecting public water supply and watersheds. The board agreed with recent community feedback to include additional language on the purpose of the growth management policy, including protecting these water supply watersheds and other important resources in the rural area. This content will be incorporated into Part Two of the plan document. As far as board feedback on the development areas utilization review, the board agreed with commission's recommendations to making, to make achieving the objectives of the comprehensive plan the highest priority factor in the development areas utilization review. The board also felt that several factors may need more frequent updates than every two years and could become part of a rezoning and special use permit application review. These factors include comparing the approved density of a project with the recommended density in the comp plan and tracking the rate at which affordable housing units are being delivered, either by right or as part of a review process. Also, on the development areas utilization, the board agreed with the commission that more incentives may be needed to better utilize land in the development areas and achieve higher densities. They also agreed with you on the idea to consider swapping areas within the development area, acknowledging where lower densities have been proposed and built, and transferring development potential to other development areas locations. Focusing on the land use tools, any comments we got on the land use tool, the board also previewed these tools at their work session and shared that the future land use map should distinguish between areas that are designated for publicly accessible open and recreation space compared with privately owned open space. This is one of your direction topics that I noted earlier. We'll go through those in a moment. The majority of the area plans are also currently, sorry, the majority of the area plans also currently use this approach, including pantops and crozet. The board also asked us to consider what incentives could be used to encourage development in the activity centers.
Can we, sorry to interrupt, can we interrupt you?
Absolutely, please.
Just a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
On those, I assume we're tracking those comments and that they may eventually turn into action items or some, so specifically, things like incentives. You know, that's great to say, but how do we actually make that, you know, happen, right? Okay.
Yeah, and to that, to that point of incentives, I mean, obviously, there are, there are models out there on how the other municipalities incentive adaptive reuse or infill projects, right? And so, I think getting some benchmarks, best practice, what are others doing to incentivize, might be helpful in that process.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Let's see, on the direction topics, the, the areas that we're looking for your feedback on specifically regarding the land use categories, we have 12, 12 standard categories. We're including the rural area in, in that number, plus three legacy land use categories. So we're looking for your confirmation that that is your direction. Also looking to confirm that ADU should be allowed in the lowest density residential. The green, representing the green, as I mentioned before, representing public access and, and separate environmentally protected areas. Let's talk about that before we leave tonight. Then, on the future land use map, we want to make sure that you agree with our consolidation approach, which really is that document that was sent earlier today, that's been referred to as a crosswalk and shows how those categories are applied. And then, under the activity centers, we want to make sure that you're comfortable with the fact that they're intended to focus growth and will function as a land use overlay. We'll make sure that you're comfortable with the attributes, the distribution, and any investment strategy that might go along with that. So for the development area chapter, how did we get here? I want to focus on the fact that when we write these plan recommendations, we incorporate community and planning commission and Board of Supervisors feedback, and also our technical expertise, best practices, and are guided by the AC44 guiding principles developed in Phase One and Two. On the screen, the themes of the input that we've heard most recently from the community related to the development area land use. Throughout Phase One and Two, we had good response and attendance to in-person and virtual events, online questionnaires, and visits to the AC44 website. We intend to have similar opportunities as part of Phase Three, including keeping the website up to date with current activities, resources, and draft documents. Based on your feedback, we've drafted 12 standard future land use categories as presented in your packet and in the draft chapter. This consolidates over 20 categories across five area plans. The crosswalk you received this morning details how the 2015 land use categories match with the proposed AC44 land use categories. The categories were mapped in a one-to-one approach, so that the color on the map or the name of the category might be different, but the overall land use recommendations are the same. This does not affect any zoning entitlements. As part of the adoption of the comprehensive plan, we will also ask the board to adopt the proposed future land use map. This chart is really for your reference, but I'll use this opportunity to discuss the recreation slash, slash, open space category, or the medium green category that we see on our flume. This currently includes both publicly accessible open space and privately owned environmental features like critical slopes, floodplain, stream buffers, and private open space. Historically, our area plans have distinguished between these two types of open space, and the board would prefer to continue with the, the two types of open space. This is a direction topic that we can address at the end of the presentation, but we are looking for your directions and thought on that topic. Right here, we have shown just an example of one of the land use category summary sheets. It does include the description, as well as identifies the primary and secondary land uses, as well as the building form and ground floor use. As I mentioned before, we do have a couple of land, legacy land use categories. These are, these include, these include neighborhood density residential low. Sorry, give me just a second. Crozet Town, Crozet Downtown, and then Town Village Center. The last, the neighborhood density residential low shows up across Crozet and the village of Rivanna only. Across the other DAs, the least dense designation is neighborhood residential, which shows up as yellow, which is three to six DUs per acre. I want to make sure that we all understand that these three land use categories will be carried over from their area plan, but will not be applied to future area plans.
Could I just ask a question of clarification? If you go back to that previous slide?
Sure.
Sorry. I'm not exactly sure what you want us to provide feedback on there. Just specifically, if it's okay for them to continue as legacy zones, if that's our thought?
Yeah, I think basically, you know, you have these kind of specialty areas, if you will. We recognize the Crozet plan, there was a lot of effort to talk about their downtown, similarly with the Rivanna Village Town Center.
Yeah.
And then, there was also these kind of, they're relatively, and Crozet is really that small area out, I think Jarman's Gap Road, that is this low-density residential. And then, there's like portions of Glenmore and Marvanna that are likewise this low-density. And we're just trying to honor some of the commitments that were made to those folks as opposed to trying to push them up to the neighborhood residential, which would be three to six dwelling units.
I see.
And our, just to follow up, if I could, our approach really was to make this a one-to-one matching exercise, rather than trying to make some of those big decisions outside of a small area planning effort. So any further detailed land use updates, we'd really prefer to do as part of a, a future effort.
And I guess the final point on that is, you know, when we're showing you these 12, we're calling the standard, because, you know, these are like, these other ones are sort of one-offs. We hope that when we move forward with small area planning, we'll try and consolidate everything. Who knows? We may stay with downtown Crozet or something like that, but that will work towards using the 12 districts in the future when we do small planning exercises, small area planning exercises.
Thank you. Need your mic, bud?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. So when, in the past, when we've had conversations about legacy zoning, there's been this whole piece that if the, the zoning on the property and if the activity on the property is, is consistent, if someone wants to come in and do something different in that particular, okay, I'm waiting.
Yeah, I heard you use legacy zoning.
Yeah.
This is, this is comp plan, so this is the, just the...
I'm, I'm, I'm doing, I'm doing an analogy.
Yes, sir.
Because the key word in all of this is legacy. And the key concept in this is that if I were able to purchase, for instance, for instance, one of the things we're going to see tonight is that Vepco was, is it called Vepco still? Yeah, Vepco. Vepco was able on the old Lynchburg Road for the grand sum of $3 million to purchase three houses there. That's the project we're going to look at tonight, which got me thinking, well, if I, I don't have $3 million, and if I did, I wouldn't tell anybody on this panel. But if I had the ability to go in, in one of these areas that say is a legacy, but yet we're going to change it, we're going to think about changing it in another one, and I bought sort of a parcel of land, could I then immediately go for the higher density or would I have to leave it as four single-family houses?
Generally speaking, when we're doing rezonings, we're trying to do them in consistency with the comp plan. So I think if your point is that, say you are one of these low-density residential, you wanted to do something higher with a rezoning, I mean, they could well be R1 zoning to begin with. That's one house per acre, right? So the hypothetical that you're providing, I guess, potentially could be an issue. I don't think we foresee that as a major issue. And again, we're trying to honor some of the commitments that were made in the previous plans for the especially low-density areas that were called out in the small area plans.
Okay, because that will be the, I think, that will be the tension when one of the questions that you ask us, when you ask us about A U, A U, P, A U, A DUs. Because in fact, you're changing the density in a, in a, in a single-family area.
I think with those, for the...
I can wait till I get there. I was just, I was just sort of trying to, I was just trying to use that legacy. And what are we assuming when we say legacy? And then, we're breaking the legacy when we start looking at ADUs.
Again, noting the lowest density standard land use categories, neighborhood residential, which recommends three to six units per acre. A recommended housing type within this land use category is accessory dwelling units. This is a direction topic that we would like to revisit later in this discussion. Given the significant amount of neighborhood residential on the map, which again is yellow, one way to address housing choice is to allow detached accessory dwelling units in all residential zoning districts for single-family detached houses, so that these units could be built throughout the development areas as, as property owners choose. This could be part of the zoning ordinance update, which will be informed by our updated comp plan. The land use categories and how they are applied to the future land use map, along with the activity centers, influence the effectiveness of the growth management policy, as we talked about last time. They are also intended to foster the desired features of the development areas, which are based on best practices, community input, and housing and transportation choices, a variety of land uses, walkable neighborhoods, parks, and amenities. The activity centers will focus growth and help identify core areas of higher intensity mixed-use development, which also helps to prioritize infrastructure projects and investments. They will operate as a land use overlay, providing additional guidance for development along with the underlying future land use categories. Projects located within the activity centers will be encouraged to develop at the higher end of their recommended density and intensity range. In the draft chap, chapter, there's a place type summary sheet for each one of the tiers of, of activity centers. Here's an example from the community center type. Each type has a description and expectations that address anticipated land use, built form, and multimodal transportation. The menu of place types were developed with a hierarchy in mind. So as the density of the development increases from local to the regional, the feasibility of transit, larger public amenities, and, and other infrastructure also increases and may require additional public investment and/or public-private partnership in order to catalyze development. This table shows a summary of the four center place types with an overview of the typical attributes that are included in more detail in the development areas land use chapter. As mentioned, these centers function like a land use overlay and encourage a higher intensity of development as compared with the underlying land use categories. We'll also walk through some examples of what these centers could look like. From most intense and dense to the least, the four types are regional, employment, community, and local centers. We'll get into the feature of, of each in the next slides. There are 30 of these centers shown on this map, which is a consolidation of the 50 centers currently in the five area plans. Many of these centers are small and not currently are anticipated to be mixed use. This consolidated set of centers helps focus development and public projects. Sorry, it seems like a... There we go. Not sure why that happened. It didn't work. Sorry, there's some animation on the slide that is not... Do what? This one? Here, okay. I'll try and talk through this specifically. So, looking at the pantops area, the Riverbend Shopping Center is identified as a regional center, which is the red oval. Imagine this area as a vibrant urban mixed-use area with residential goods, services, and entertainment accessible by a variety of transportation options and could serve as a regional destination. It covers approximately a half mile with a quarter-mile focused core area with buildings that are three to eight stories with structured parking and fit into the surrounding context. Ground story uses are required within the core area, and the built environment includes walks, includes wide sidewalks and streetscape elements that encourage pedestrian activity. Moving on to the community center represented in blue at Rivanna Ridge, this area will be a focal point for commercial and, and cultural activities that are accessible by a variety of transportation options, also with a walk shed of a half mile and a center area of a quarter mile. The core area will consist of buildings at least two stories that may range up to six stories and fit in with this, also fit in with the surrounding context. Parking is relegated to the side or rear of buildings, and you, the use of on-street parking is encouraged. Medium-scale plazas and parks are encouraged and should be visible and linked together. Moving on to the area of the Centara Martha Jefferson Hospital and also Broadway, we have a concentration of employment generation, generating uses that support basic industries and economic development goals. While mixed use is encouraged, residential, commercial, and retail should be considered secondary uses that support employees and community members. The center does not have a defined walk shed or center, but instead should be a cluster of related facilities. Buildings are generally two to four stories with massing height and step back, step backs consistent with localized recommendations. Just note, to note about the circle shown at the hospital, these, as part of a, an a future small area planning effort, will be refined and focused on to follow parcel lines, so that it more accurately reflects where the activity center should be. Local centers, like the one at Route 20 and Riverside Village, shown in orange, are the least dense and intense of the center types. They are also smaller in scale of activity and support a quarter-mile walking radius. A mix of uses is expected, and buildings have at least two stories and can be up to four. Activity ground story uses are encouraged, along with small to medium-sized publicly accessible open space with relegated parking to encourage pedestrian activity. Bike and pedestrian facilities connect to adjacent neighborhoods and other activity and employment centers. There are a couple here. This brings us to our upcoming events. So today being October 22nd, we're here to talk to you about the development area land use tools and policy. We'll go to the board on November 6th to speak about the same topic. And we'll be checking in with the community, community on October 30th to go over these same topics, along with the growth management policy. On November 12th, we'll be back to talk about the development areas land use goal, objectives, and actions with you. And then, the board on November 20th. The day before, we'll be here to talk with you all about the rural area land use tools and policy. Then, we'll be coming back on December 10th to talk with you about the goal, objectives, and actions on, again, on December 10th. And January 8th, we'll be presenting the entire chapter to the board. Going to go to the next slide here, which is the list of direction topics, so we can go through any questions you have, the discussion, but I will leave these up on the screen. Thank you.
Great, thank you. This is helpful to have this up. That was my next question, you read my mind. So, just, why don't we, I think it may be best just to take these one at a time, see if we can kind of come to consensus at the end of each of the categories, and some of them may blend. I have a really, like, comp plan 101 question. The, the second one, where we talk about ADUs and low-density residential, remind me, are you talking about, are we talking about rural areas or within the development areas low-density residential for now?
Within the development areas. It's the, we provided posters for y'all, if you wanted to look up and look at specific areas, but the yellow that is shown on that map is where we're suggesting that ADUs may be.
Thank you. I thought I had heard we were, met, somebody mentioned rural area. Just wanted to make sure. Cool. Thank you. All right, anybody want to kick us off in terms of the land use categories? Any comments on this?
I have sort of a process-ish question that I think is related to land use categories. And, you know, last time we were here, two weeks ago, I was saying, let's not have a yellow neighborhood residential. Let's start with missing middle, because there's all this great rhetoric and three pages of, of all the great things that missing middle can include. And then, I look at the map, and there's actually not any missing middle in the sort of urban ring. And, and I think, you know, last time, I was like, why don't we just start with missing middle? Just like when you get a coffee, you start with medium. I'm being facetious. But, but at the same time, I think there's so much in here that recognizes the need, and there's so much in here that cleans things up really nicely. And it's, it's kind of like you've got this great soaring rhetoric identifying the issue, and then, and then it's like, oh, and then we've got all these yellow swaths that are just kind of the status quo. And I, I think I was picking up on, that's because you want to sort of honor a commitment that was made at some point, and then punt this to sort of future small area plans to maybe change that in the future. And I was just curious as to why that approach, rather than we're being more comprehensive with our comprehensive... with our comprehensive plan.
Can we just ask one, is there one clarification of staff? So, the middle residential, that's intended to be the missing middle. Is that right, designation?
Yeah, I was conflating missing middle with middle residential.
Okay, got it. Okay, so you're cool with the missing middle. Gotcha, I'm sorry. And Louise, did you have something good to say?
So, a couple of answers to that. One, I think, obviously, part of what we're trying to do is, how do we use development area effectively? How do we try and, with the density that we talk about wanting in there, and the commercial intensity? I think staff's really trying to work towards these activity centers as the vehicle to do that, and not so much make a radical change, if we would, with this particular plan, the land uses, as they've been worked through in previous small area plans. So, a lot of what we're doing on the land use map itself is trying to have some fidelity to the previous planning efforts and not change those areas. So, everybody's gonna be talking about this richer yellow, you know, the neighborhood residential category. And it does, there's a lot of that on the map, as you'll see, and that represents a lot of R1 and R2 zoning in our community. There's obviously a choice that could be made by the community to push that up. Staff took a sort of a, I think, what it reflects of what we've understood is more of a pragmatic approach at this time to really focus in on the activity centers and moreover, to try and like, put that hierarchy in place and to really try and say, hey, here are a couple centers we really should try to, start building a walkable core, someplace that really starts to meet the goals that we've been talking about, the neighborhood model and as a community for years. So, I think that the question, we're sort of really trying to come back with the yellow, the residential, the neighborhood residential is, you know, ADUs is probably something that we would recommend and support as opposed to really a missing middle type category where you'd start to have more of a wider variety of housing types.
Well, I appreciate the answer, and I mean, I think, you know, my personal fidelity to past plans is pretty low, and my pace of change feels like, it's like, come on, come on. But I do appreciate where you're coming from on that. And, you know, it's just hard when it feels like an emergency, as our prices keep spiking and spiking and spiking, and we're pushing lower-income people out today, is why I bring that up over and over. But I get it, and I think the centers do make a lot of sense as far as, there's a clear logic to it, and it's clean, and it sort of builds on what's already sort of existing, in as much as we're able to do that on places that already have existing, you know, developments and businesses that are working.
Chair, if I could just...
Yes, please.
So, even if we look at the missing middle model, that's on page 10, where you lay out detached single-family homes, which I guess would be emblematic of the yellow up there, it feels to me what we've been seeing in my sort of X amount of years on the commission, is we've been seeing a lot of projects that basically would fit the missing middle house. If we look at sort of the stuff at Brookfield, I always mess up those names, yeah, Brookhill. Look at Brookhill, if we look at some of the stuff that's come on Rio Road in both areas now, that's now started playing, if we look at the thing that's going to be built up there on John Warner Parkway and Rio, Rio Park Street, whatever it is. And in fact, and then, boy, was I surprised when I got an email, I'm sure like everybody else, that the RST project is now owned by yet another hometown big business. But it seems like what's coming to us by default, now what's not coming to us, we're getting the structure, we're not getting the nexus to transportation and centers. So, we're getting the form, but the form is not being connected to the kinds of places that I think colleague over here is saying if we could get, I'm not sure that if we were to do all the yellow, we'd get the same, I think, and I'll make my comment when we get, what I think will happen with ADUs, which is why I may be less enthusiastic about those than other people on the panel, on the commission. But I think we're getting that form. What we're not getting is the nexus to transportation. We don't own it, and we don't get the nexus to commercial centers, which my last walk around the commercial centers in our area is that we've got a lot of vacancies, of which I was gonna come and talk to you, ask you, how do you ensure, when you were using the Pantops thing, the Pantops, I know it as the Pantops Shopping Center, and the other one's the Giants Shopping Center. I'm sorry, I know we have these fancy terms for it, but you know, it's the Food Line Shopping Center, and the general, I know, because when you send, it's the van, it's like, where the heck is that? It's not in that development area, which is not being used effectively, I can tell you that much. But when you look at the vacancies in those, in those commercial sectors, there's a lot of empty storefronts. So, if we're talking about how we're going to use centers to be these places that enlighten and enliven the communities, then I would want you to have some sense to be able to share with us, what's the vacancy rates in this place? Because we can say that this is something that we want to happen here, but if we look at those, if we look at those eight or ninth, not one, two, three, four, it was twelve, thirteen, fourteen, if we look at those five areas, just from Pant, from the bridge up to Martha Jefferson, we've got a lot of empty retail, empty offices, you know? And so, my idea would want to be, in addition to this, and this is where I think you speak to your economic development, for this to happen, how are we gonna make that happen? Because it's not apparent to me, it's not apparent how we make that a reality. I know how we make it part of a plan, but if we're starting to shift towards matrix, how do we, if we say, yes, we're gonna do this, then what's the thing is, as Commissioner Carranza will say, how are we gonna know at the end of the day that we've been successful doing that? And right now, I see a lot, I see a lot of empty commercial space in Alamo County.
Could I tag on for that? Get a chance?
Bring your microphone. Karen, bring your microphone.
Sorry, could I tag on to that? And I know you didn't get a chance to answer, I'm not trying to be rude, but I had, I had some similar thoughts, so rather than bringing them up later out of sync. So, yeah, when you were talking about the Riverbend Shopping Center, I've spent a lot of time there, I used to ride my bike there all the time, pick up some Chinese and, you know, get a video, remember those, when you got videos? Anyway, that shows how long ago that was. But, you know, listening to you talk made it sounded great, like, I'm like, oh, I want to go to that place. But I was trying to imagine, like, what makes the owner of that shopping mall go and get out of those single-story sprawly, you know, the food line and the enterprise car rental and the roses and all that stuff that's there? Like, what, what, what is the, what does the county do to incentivize someone to have this vision? I mean, it's right by the Ivanna Trail, so it has like a lot of other amenities around there, so it would lend itself really well to residential and mixed use. I think it would be fantastic, there's some restaurants there, but, so I just, I just feel like we, rather than just writing these beautiful statements, we need to go farther, and maybe that's the plan, but what is it that we do to show the development community? Yeah, if you want to come in and join our vision, wow, we're gonna make this easy for you to do this, you know? Do we fast-track things? Do we facilitate things? Do we lower fees for that to happen? And just think about the Pantops area in general, I know we're not here tonight to make a small area plan or master plan, but, like, when I was first on the commission, a regular thing that happened was people would come from that area and talk about the pedestrian bridge they wanted to cross, 250. And we talked about this a lot in this commission, and that isn't there yet. That's like seven years ago, or whatever it is. I mean, that's a long time, so we can't get across the street there, and so like, drawing those bubble diagrams with that road in the middle, it's kind of like the elephant in the room, we really can't, you can't, I was dropping off my car at Toyota, and I wanted to go to Guadalajara's, and they're like, no ma'am, you can't go over there. I'm like, no, I can see it. They're like, please get in the van. I'm like, why? And they're like, ma'am, we can't risk your life, please get in the van, and we'll drive you, and they'll pick you up, you know? So, it's, I mean, is that ridiculous? So, I just really want us to think about how to incentivize and be careful about, like, making these grand visions without, I just don't, I'm missing that, how we actualize that.
Can I, I know now I'm interrupting your answer, but I also want to make sure we stay on track, and I will stop talking in a second till I answer, but, so we're focusing on 12 standard plus three legacy land use categories, right? So, is it staff's hope, and I'm not trying to put words in everybody's mouth, but is it your goal for us to say that the general direction of the commission is that we agree that the reduction from 24 to 12 plus three legacy land use, thank you, categories, is acceptable with these fill-in-the-blank modifications to those specific 12 standard plus three legacy land uses? Is that, that's what the goal is?
Yeah, and...
It feels like we're getting a little into activity centers.
Yeah, that's what I was going.
Okay. So, I just, just maybe, yeah, go for it.
Yes, that's one completely related. Wasn't there 11?
Yeah, it was 11. We wanted to underline the fact that the 12th was the rural area. There's 11 in the urban area and 12...
But in the key, there's only 11, and I think before there was 11, but, okay, the 12th is the rural area, I got it.
And the text says two legacy land use categories, but I guess we're, three is the right number, right?
Three is the correct number.
Okay, so, sorry to...
So, I'll be helpful, Chair. I think, I think that the 11 that are here, and I know our colleague, even though I'm a ruralite, I'm a ruralite, even though I know my other ruralite says there should be a, something to try and to add something to the rural area, so right now, we're gonna have one, maybe by the end of it, we'll have two, but so, I'm fine with this. There's some definitional things that at some point...
Yeah, go for it.
I'm fine with the two, they're just some little things.
Yeah, but if you say, these are the, these are the 11, I'm like, makes sense to me, it's clear, it's descriptive, it sort of accurately predicts, describes what we've talked about we want our future to be. There's some stuff in there that, you know, I just, I would like, in the how-to-apply section, a bit, a bit more, and so I'll be quiet there, because I can, I can see other people, but to answer your question, yes.
Thank you, perfect.
Very helpful.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, so I would say, once again, generally speaking, I mean, I would still, as you predicted, the grand sea of rural area of all one color outside the, outside of that, I would, I would hope that when we get to Rural Area chapter, we can reconsider whether the sea of green really needs to be a uniform like that. As an example, I brought it before, if you look at Ivy, Ivy used to be a growth area. And when it was a growth area, it had designated green spaces. When it was removed as a growth area, it also lost its greenways and its green spaces. They still kind of exist in some ways, but they're not on the map anymore. And so I think that, I think we maybe need to reverse direction on that, not just for Ivy, but the whole rural area. So, I will push, so, some of the things too, and the question says, your question about green representing access on separate environmentally protected areas, I think this is an important question, because, you know, you look at areas, we've had this, this goal, you look at like Pantops, for example, along the Rivanna River, we've had areas that we've said, hey, we think this should be a nice greenway, but when it actually comes to be developed, those areas, it's often only a sliver of that that actually becomes open space. And I think that that's something that we should really consider in, you know, in these plans, is how can we go from, if we're gonna put something on the map as green, we're being disingenuous to the public and saying, well, we're planning for this to be, you know, open space, but really, we know only like 15% of that is probably gonna end up as open space. So...
Finish your thoughts, sir.
Okay. So, I mean, I think that we need some, we need some concrete strategies, if our goal really is for that to be green space, for that to actually be green space. But overall, I'm okay with that being two different colors. The other thing that I would say too is that in the land use categories for employment centers, when you show like Martha Jefferson, it talks about their not being identified pedestrian networks. I'll tell you, as someone who may or may not work for a hospital and who may not have run to work, you know, that, I think that it is actually really, really super important for employment centers to have ways for people to commute by bike and walk, and I think it particularly like regional networks. I think the idea of regional networks that get you to employment centers, I think is really important. I know that in the office where I've worked in the past, that we've had a lot of people that bike and ran and walked to our office. So, I think that's...
Well, in good form, you're actually moving us along very well, that's great, because I just want to make sure that everybody's addressed the land use category heading before we get into the ADUs, the green space, the flume, and the activity centers.
I had a quick...
Yeah.
...point on, on the 12, and it's actually, it combines that and activity centers, so... And this goes to some of the earlier conversations that we were having about the missing middle. And so I think this is a deeper dive, but I just want to put it out there as we think about it, as we think about the activity centers, right? And the edges of the activity centers. Some of those activity centers are in, they're smack in the middle of yellow, right? So, are there opportunities around those activity centers that then we begin to think, well, is there enough zoning so that we go from the yellow to the, to the, to the missing middle around those activity centers? There may be, I mean, I know some of those are just legacy R1s, and there's a whole layer, I don't want to open that can, but, but I think there may be some opportunities as you think about it. Okay, we have an activity center, there's some densification potentially going on, we want to encourage that development. Is there residential, and this goes to what Commissioner Firehawks was saying, that there may be some opportunities around these activity centers that lend themselves to residential at a higher density that we should consider at some point? I mean, that's, that's the whole point of development zone, is can we densify it? And as we're doing that, it's how we can preserve some other areas, the rural area in particular, so, but if we keep missing the opportunity to densify, so I just think that's just an opportunity to mix these two maps together, right? Combine them and say, what's happening at the rings of these activity centers?
Yes, sir.
Said, one question and then one comment, and I think, Mr. Chairman, you're probably ready to drive us forward. But one question is around institutional, and it has primarily affordable in response to housing in parentheses. Just curious if you could talk a little bit about why that is signaled out and just institutional, opposed to other categories as well?
I think this is a nod to the, the government and public uses, knowing that that includes our teachers, our police officers, our safety individuals, and making sure that they're able to afford housing close to where they work.
Yeah.
I think that's the only reason that's called out specifically.
Okay, so I guess my, my comment would be, are there other uses where we want to be thinking along those lines as well? I could see in the neighborhood, you know, residential perhaps, maybe something there as well, but that's something for the staff to explore. And then I guess the second portion, it's maybe a rhetorical question, I'm not sure if you can answer it on the spot, but I'd be curious if we know the housing needs for our community, and if based off of what we're showing here in these recommended density ranges, and looking at the activity centers on the map and where we're trying to push development, if they were built out according to this, what is that impact to the amount of units we actually need? Are we actually solving, how close are we getting to solving our housing issue, if that makes sense, right? So, you have this huge number, and you have all these density ranges, you know, if we can build out half of this, because I know typically when we have these density ranges, we're not even getting close to the top of them with the proposals that come through. So, if you develop half of this, are we 25% better with housing? But there's something to think about as we start to articulate the vision moving forward, particularly with these land uses, there's something to plant there, so. Mr. Barnes, like, you want to say something? Give me those eyes.
I'm not a good poker player. I would just basically, one thing I keep in my mind, Charlottesville, 10 square miles, 44,000 people, we've got 37 square miles, we've got 65,000, that, and it's just an interesting comparison, so it's hard to answer some of those questions.
Yeah.
And part of the things you guys are talking about really sort of blends across multiple questions we were asking you about, what are we gonna do as a community, or how are we gonna meet our, you know, to incentivize development, how are we gonna meet our affordable goals? Sometimes it's kind of hard to give you a good metric response, I think that's what that look was on my face. It's like, it's hard for me to give you a good metric response until I sort of understand where we're willing to go as a community in the meeting those goals.
Yeah, and I didn't expect a response, that, that would've been pretty impressive if you had one right away, but just something to think about, you know, as we're doing that, because I'm just curious, we always talk about it, but we don't really ever know how much of a positive push are we making to solve in the issue, so.
But you, but you know, Chair, that, I mean, so if we were, if we were, if we were a, a sort of a strategic planning board for a corporation, every quarter, we'd be looking at what were our potential sort of market. And the data which we use coming from the Weldon Cooper Center, while it's, while it's decent data, it's always got a tremendous lag on it when I look at it. Okay. And so we're trying to look at density options for some data that hasn't really, I don't think, I shouldn't say it that way. So, so people should, should know that I'm not just pulling this stuff out of my back pocket. In another life, I was an econometrician. Okay, so this kind of forecasting on macro levels is something I did for and was paid nicely for. And so what I, what I become concerned about is that we make policy decisions based on old information. Information that has not been updated and it is not sort of reflective of our evolving, our evolving environment. And so that's the piece where I'm the most least appreciative of, of the planning process. Because if we were in a for-profit organization, or even if we were at the university, looking, just, just looking at, at enrollment numbers, we would be constantly looking at the data to make sure that these data are informing these kinds of decisions, because these are expensive decisions. You know, you've got people, how do you incentivize people to do it? Well, you have to have policies and you have to be looking at our density issue. Do we, given the numbers, if, because we're using something from the 20s, I think, from, from 2020, from Weldon Cooper Center data from the 2020, which is completely different. I would say that's completely useless, given the new environment, the economic environment that we work in. And so how do we help send this, send the message perhaps through staff to the supervisors and say, your staff needs some more quantitative analysis help so that they can in fact be giving you the right, the sort of timely information? So they can be sourcing the information to be able to tell you whether or not we're, to say what you're saying. Are we, are we going to make this? Or, or is this really, or is this number really real anymore? You know, is this a real number?
And I, I don't, I don't know if I'm confusing the subjects here, but on page three, where it talks about the factors to be tracked.
Right, there you go.
That kind of plays into it, right? And then also, I think in the update, we heard that there's a recommendation that those reviews of some kind be done more than every two years and also be wrapped into the rezoning.
Right. And I'm suggesting, what I'm suggesting is if, since we're always sort of having, you know, we're dealing with someone who comes to us with an organization that comes to us and says, we've done this analysis, we want to invest this money. And yet we don't have data to support whether or not what we're, what they're asking us to do so that we can make a recommendation up the chain is actually based on, on data that we're, that, that we would never do that in another place.
Right. No, we got to move on to the other. And I would just say that I do appreciate that, as we put in there, we did put, we talked about measurables here multiple times. I know I've been banging on those drums for, for quite a while. And I, and I want to just give heads up to, or acknowledge that it's, it's been incorporated here and is right in the front. And you, you talk about some of the growth projections. It is Weldon Cooper Center, that's the data. But you are providing a means to, how do we measure this? And, and what I would add to it is, we have an amazing resource in a new school for data science at UVA. Those are incredibly, incredibly bright folks in there, students as well, that are very eager to take on projects. Could be a thesis project, could be. So I would encourage you, and if you're interested, I can connect you with the right people there, that might help in, in some of this data analysis that that we're talking about.
Awesome. So before we move on to the next one, just checking land use categories, any specific other points? Yes, ma'am.
One small one. So yeah, to answer the big question, I'm fine with the categories that make sense, yada, yada. Okay. So there's just my little small question or comment, is middle residential on page 11 where it talks about live work units? And talking to folks from the development community and talking about the fact that we already have a lot of our land developed, not densely enough perhaps, but you know, we're looking at a lot of redevelopment really. And so the live work units require a fire separated space from the ground floor to the, the unit above. I think that, so that I've been talking, talking to people in the development community who've said like, that's a real problem. Because if you have an older structure that could work for that, but now you need this fire separated floor in the county, you want to prove it. Now, if you had a coffee shop down below or a little, you know, restaurant or something, yeah, that would, I would be really worried about fire. I, I ran an office for 18 years, no, nothing ever caught on fire, you know? So I'm just saying that maybe we need to, just like the county wanted to see reuse of our historic structures, so they allowed five, if it was a historic building with, they could have five units for lodging within that historic structure as a way to allow people to afford to keep those big structures and promote lodging in the rural areas. So in a similar vein, could we not look at, you know, a situation where depending on the use in that live workspace, it doesn't have to have a fire separated floor if it's an adaptive reuse? Because to your earlier points, yes, people have really changed how they work. And a lot of people can do that kind of work out of their home with just like, maybe one client comes by once a week kind of thing. I'm just thinking that a lot of this live workspace is not that intensive. Does it need that fire separated layer in there? Because a lot of structures don't have that. Even ones that were previously commercial.
Well, I think I would say, we're working on the conference of plan, which will help influence the zoning code, which would then allow the uses. All I think you're talking about poly reference more, I would assume, with more in a building code.
It is, but it actually says fire separated. You know, it's actually detailed in the comp plan language. So what I'm saying is maybe we add some language that, you know, for an adaptive reuse situation where they're not building new or it's historic or whatever language that we can have our county staff work with that, that person to make that work.
So on that fine point, maybe we strike that from the comp plan.
That would be probably the easiest thing to do and just say, we want to encourage live workspace and adaptive reuse of our important structures.
True.
And allow people, recognizing how many people are working from home and running small businesses.
Keep it at the comp plan level.
Yeah, that's, that's, so I saw that was a long-winded, very small point.
Yeah. Just one other thing I would add here too, is that, you know, a lot of this area that we have up on 29 that, that we have as a general commercial. Or part of the 29 small area, but, but in particular, I think a, a big opportunity, if we want to get a lot of infill, is really looking at these big shopping centers. You know, we talked about incentives. I think that's, you know, these areas with vast amounts of pavement, that's not even being used up there. You can see from outer space. I think, to me, it's clear TIFF is, is one of the big tools we should be applying there. But also maybe direct subsidies of structured parking. Because we've heard people talk about how maybe they would build more density, but they, they can't afford structured parking. So I think.
A lot of, a lot of towns have, like, like just Stanton, that much smaller community than us has put, built their own structured parking downtown so that they could have that density.
I mean, you know, there's been a lot of efforts to try and construct walkability from scratch, and it almost always fails in Almar County. I think, you know, where the best walkability happens is where you can retrofit it. And so you have these shopping centers, you already have like maybe a grocery store, you have some shops there. You drop a parking garage in the middle of that thing, suddenly you freed up all this extra space that could be housing. And I just think that that's the logical way to approach some, approach some of these activity centers and to really, you know, create the kind of density that we're looking for.
So just to clarify. Yeah, just to clarify, I think you're talking about activity centers, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we're, we're back on the land use category. So it sounds like, and I'm going to try to summarize here, make sure I've got everybody's, I don't know if I can do this or not, but I need some help. We're generally supportive. Everybody's generally supportive.
Is that inclusive of that earlier question about whether we are supportive of ADUs?
No, we're going to get to that next. Thank you. We're at number one. So generally, there was some comments about missing middle and make, and I want to make sure I captured your thoughts correctly, but how, how would you summarize that in a sentence?
That I feel like middle residential is a better place to start than neighborhood residential as an overall category.
Awesome. And then we discussed focusing proactively on the edges, ensuring that there's potentially rezoning in anticipation of future development around the edges. I think the word for me anyway, I'll mix all my comments in with this, that is proactive and thinking about what that looks like as we talk through the categories. Let's see, we talked about recreational open space having clarity and detail in some of the rural areas. We'll get to that in a minute, I think, or maybe next time we review this. The importance of analytics, reviewing density allowances, ranges and actual needs. Live workspace is adaptive reuse, focusing on that as, as we get to this point. But I think generally supportive. One, one thing I just mentioned is as we look through this and as we think about density, are there other, like some of these categories, some of the future land uses list specifics like parking? And some don't. And I'm wondering if, if there are places, unless I'm, am I mixing up thing? Am I talking about activity centers? No.
Yeah, I think that's an activity center, there's specific.
That's where the parking is. Thank you.
Where the parking is one of the, one of the categories.
Thank you. I jumped ahead. Okay, that was it.
Chair, Chair, on the, on the green, I think this, if we're talking about the green within the, the developed area, the, then I would just want to add on to your comment.
Yeah.
Just about every single park we have, the land was donated to the county. The county has not purchased a piece of property to turn into a park. And I would just like to add, I think one, one of the things that we're seeing, if you're trying to encourage development in that area, that the county is going to have to invest in amenities. And one of those amenities may be parks.
Green space.
Green spaces or gathering spaces.
Great, thank you. So let's jump to ADUs. Staff, are we good? Michael, you're snickering. Are we good?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. ADUs and low density residential, any thoughts, comments?
Sir. So while I'm generally supportive, I do have a concern. And it gets, gets back to that concept of getting more missing middle in that, of that vast yellow area. If, if we, if we allow a lot of ADUs, we're in many ways locking in that area's single family residential. Because it's going to be a lot harder for some to come back and buy those parcels and then convert them to some other use. So as I said, while I'm, I'm generally in support of it, I do find that as a concern that, you know, I mean, if you create a bunch of new houses there, that's more that some developer would have to buy if they did want to convert it to something that had a little bit more density to it.
Point. Thanks. Yes, sir.
So I would be wanting some additional information on how much of that is outside of an HOA. Because most, because most of the, most of the HOAs in our community do not, are not supportive of ADUs.
Or don't even allow it in their bylaws. Like really.
Yeah, that's, that's even a higher level. So, so the net on that is really worth, would that be? And so that was, that's just a general question. And then from a sort of positional space, I don't know how supportive I am of ADUs if we're really just increasing the Airbnb inventory in our region.
That's interesting, you know?
I, I would say that that would be something that I would be fundamentally opposed to. Many of you have heard me say, I am not empathetic to, I need a Airbnb so I can keep my house. There's lots of people in this community who don't have that option. And it tends to be people who are more privileged, who have the option of creating an Airbnb in their home so that they can keep their property. And I don't necessarily know that the county should be tilting the, the economic scale one way or the other. And so that, that doesn't feel neutral to me if that's what I'm engaging, if that's what this, this policy would engage in. But I think, I don't believe that there's a way that we can engage with a prohibition on land that says you can only do this if you're going to rent it to somebody, you're going to put your child or a family or your mother-in-law apartment. And so I would be very resistant to just creating a new income stream for people.
Just a, I mean, just a reply to that first, last part first. I mean, the current rules in the county on Airbnb or, or any homestay, short-term homestay use is that you have to be home when it has to be in your home, and you can only do up to two bedrooms. So that already, in the existing ordinance kind of covers that. But you guys see that there could be a lot of non-compliance, perhaps, invite non-compliance. Just inviting non-compliance, yeah. I mean, I think Commissioner Murray and I on this one might be a little bit similar is that, to me, I, I had no problem with ADUs. It does feel like if, if we were to sort of recolor the yellow as orange and call it, you know, middle residential, some people would opt for a backyard ADU. Some people might opt for a fourplex. Some people might opt for like the cottage community, all those cool things that are in those three pages describing the single, rather, middle residential.
Yeah. And I, I think, but the point about, that you raise about HOAs is, is important. And I think one of the things, you know, that, that I hear people's concerns about density is that they're getting this density without infrastructure. And so I think that, you know, as we get into these small area plans, as we try to make the case, you don't want to be yellow, you want to be middle, that it should come with some solid commitments to infrastructure as part of that. And I think, you know, I think that people would be willing to support, you know, greater density if it said like, hey, listen, I know you're, you have an older neighborhood, you never got sidewalks. You never got a park. Guess what? We're going to make, we're going to give you sidewalks and a park if you allow this in your neighborhood.
The other kind of cool thing with that too, is as the tax base increases in value, we have the resources to do that, to do those things. And I will also just concur, I've, I've had some harsh words about HOAs in, in this dais in the past, and I, I still have those. I think they, they limit us and, and bind us really, really badly in a sort of anti-freedom way that we would have to get really creative in how we work through that in the future.
Now, we're, I will say, I'll say this, I, I've said this before, there's one thing about the Commonwealth of Virginia is definitely a land, a land rights place. And I will say, even though HOAs at one point were exclusionary by all kinds of manners, that they're voluntary associations. You do not have to buy a house there. And so if a bunch, if a person purchases a house in a place that's got an HOA, that is, hopefully they were served well by their realtor, that they know what they're buying into. And so I, while I understand the, you would, you wouldn't buy into one. I know you did. That's just when you say that. I know you did. I would not buy into one, although I do own one. I, I, I think that, that, that is a freedom of, of commerce thing, that I don't necessarily know that the Commonwealth would allow a county to sort of come in and, and, and break that. I know.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Clayber?
I think my colleagues have raised some very good points. Some of them I didn't even think about, but I hate for us to throw the baby out with the bathwater also. And so I think the one nice thing as we're talking about, you know, multiple generations kind of living in the county and one time in the workforce, it could be a nice way to age in place, right? For your, your parents or whoever to share the property with you. So don't have the magic bullet for that now, but I want to be able to reconcile what some of our colleagues are saying, but still keeping open mind to how this could work. But it sounds like just a blanket ADU, you know, call for a low density residential that probably needs a little bit more tweaking, I would think. So.
Carol's on?
Don't really have much to add. I mean, I, I would say again, that as we look at the areas that would potentially be appropriate, I, I think it, it would be around those, those activity centers. So. So looking at how one could work with the other goes back to the, the infrastructure point. If we have activity centers, maybe there's, there's transit that's going there as well. So that's another incentive, right? Besides the sidewalk, besides the park. So there may be specific areas that lend themselves more to the other, and the deeper dive will help us identify that.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Firehawk?
And just really quickly, so on the ADU question, I, I think I would have some heartburn by just saying, you know, allowing them by right in this zone, period.
Absolutely.
Um, maybe by SUP or something that they would have to come in and apply, and we could consider each case on a case-by-case basis. And I will say, I've been the owner of an accessory dwelling unit, which I rented out and made really affordable for someone for nine years. And I also benefited when I was young and poor from living in accessory cottage in Earlysville for 400 bucks a month, which is awesome. So I really support it, but. So I really support it, but again, in those examples I just gave, my personal life, those cottages were tucked away, not taking up a whole backyard, not, you know, not bothering the neighbors in any way. So I just feel like each one is contextual. You know, you could be putting one above your garage and it isn't even an extra structure in your yard, it's just using some space legally. But I also take your point about the Airbnb. So we, you know, people have to apply to have an Airbnb, yes, there are violations. So I just, I just, it's just the by right part that gives me heartburn. Also in some neighborhoods, that backyard, that looking out, that vista of your yard and your neighbor's yard is, if you don't have a park, that's kind of like your green vista. And if it's suddenly covered with structures, it's, it's really changing the character of the neighborhood potentially. So I, it's just the by right part I don't like.
I think you're getting a lot of yes, we agrees, but I'm just curious for staffs. If straw poll, who agrees that they should not be by right?
Should not be by right.
Not be by right. Okay, almost unanimous. Just, thank you. Cool. So let me try to summarize here. ADUs, generally supportive. Our general direction is that they not be by right. That's our general direction. That's not unanimous. I was told there's a difference. And, and, and that focusing on a good question about HOAs impacts to that, I think I, I had written down that we should have parameters around, this is poorly worded, but qualifications and intent of ADUs and low-density residential. So part of that is having to support it through a process that's bigger than just by right. Keep the big picture in mind. So infrastructure and proximities to other activity centers. And helpful for agent place opportunities. Anything I missed? Great. Green represents public access and separate environmentally protected areas. Yeah.
I, I'm not sure that everyone has the benefit of where that's coming from.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah, just a, real quick, like when we were at the board last week, talked about this. The observation was, the map has a lot of green on it and that that was not publicly accessible space. I think on a previous complience plan, maybe the previous one before that, a decision was made. It's a bit strange, most communities wouldn't call out all of their environmental spaces or HOA properties as green. They would really only have the green for publicly accessible spots. Think it's interesting to look at the map especially as we start talking about how we can, you have two options here, three options here. You leave it like it is, you could split them and have one color green for parks or if you have like a a dedicated greenway area, something like it came for a particular rezoning. That could be one color and then the environmental resources could be a separate color of green. And the third way is kind of more traditional, which is you wouldn't show that at all on a map, you would just have parks. And you would have the yellow, to pick a color, extending to the property line. And it wouldn't necessarily show the HOA property, floodplain, stream buffers, critical slopes. In this case, it's interesting to see how much green is up there in the context of how can we use our development area? I think in some respects, it truthfully calls out how much of the, the development area is either parks or this protected kind of zone. So I, that's the context.
That's great. So one, one thing I think I remember is part of the past 2015 process. The, the selection of those green areas was done sort of, I don't want to say arbitrarily, but it, it's based on critical slopes, floodplains, things like natural features, right? To your point, so pulling those out from parks, sometimes they blend, right, because a natural feature is in a park. Or the other way around, a parks in a natural features. So I think it'd be kind of tricky to do that. For me, it comes down to more the practical reason for having them. So if you're, if you were an applicant and you have a large parcel of land or a parcel of land and you know, you have green spaces marked on the comp plan, what does that really mean for me as the applicant?
Could you not, just quickly, could you not just do white crosshatching over the green that's not publicly accessible?
If, if we were to, I was going to recommend something to you while we were just sort of on the fly. I'd call out parks or publicly accessible land in one color. I wouldn't bother putting its environmental aspects on top of that. And then I would have a second category that was if we want you to do this, that would show these protected areas. I think one thing you'd notice is I-64 is actually green too in this thing. So I think we'd take that one off completely.
And all.
Yeah, I, I think.
I thought that was like Greenway to Crozay. That's the Greenway to Crozay.
Exactly. So just as a proposed model, it may make sense to do it publicly and then the protected areas as a different color. I think that'd be what we would suggest to you all.
How do you all feel about that? Any?
Well, I, I might amend something there. I mean, I think it's good to have on a map. So there's, there's areas that we have as parks. There's areas that we have as environmental resources and there's areas we would like to be parks in the future. And, and those areas we would like to be parks typically are environmentally sensitive areas. But they don't have to be. And I think so, there's some dangers. I mean, there's, there's some input that we've gotten from the public. You know, you know, in Crozay just recently, we had a bunch of floods. And all the bridges and all the infrastructure that we, we put down there over the Crozay Trail, they, they had to go and rebuild all that. And then big flood came and then knocked a bunch of that out again. There, there's dangers to putting all of your, all your parks and floodplains. And so I think, I think having areas that you say like, hey, listen, this is a nice area. Whether or not it's environmentally sensitive area, this is an area we would like to be a park in the future, that it's, it's nice to have a color for that. That that's designated on the map. I think we have to have a better system by which to, to help incentivize and get that to the point where that whole area has the potential to be a park, either through purchase, as it was mentioned. Or through a mechanism like transfer development rights, which other localities have used for the purpose to transfer density out of those green spaces into other areas where they do want that density to occur, where that density can occur. You know, so you, you're a developer, you own two pieces of land, a lot of developers own more than one piece of land. One of the pieces of land includes an area we want green space in, the other area, they'd really like high density. We let them move that density to the other place, so they don't have to come through us for rezoning. So there's, there's ways to do these that other, other localities have done, that I think we really need to explore. But I definitely think to the question, I definitely think that we need to have the colors on the map to say, these are areas that we're planning to be green space. But I do like, I do think it's important to separate those out from active parks.
Any other comments? I want to make sure we have time for activities.
I would just like to sort of add. I don't, we do not have a deficit of parks in Applemore County. We have a deficit of community spaces. And whether or not that's a green space or that's a space for the gazebo. And most of the projects that come to us because of the rule that says that they have to have some X amount of 25% of it has got to be green or something like that. Within the project, there's a decent amount where not always, some of us on this panel are not always pleased with how some of that green spaces is laid out on, on the project. But it meets the threshold that's in the thing. What we don't have is, I don't have a place, and I, at one point I said, I sent a photo to Commissioner, Commissioner Moore, and it was just this interesting thing, it was at Barracks Road, and so don't go blah, 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 blah. It was a little, the little quad at Barracks Road. And there were people meeting and there were people walking and there were people standing and talking. And so I was in sort of said, how could I replicate that in the county? So I've been driving around the county trying to see where would there be a natural place that people could come, I could see you, I could say, hey, can I, we could sit down and have something like that. We don't have any place in the county, we will, when Barnes Lumber is finished. Okay, we might if there's something that really happens in the village of Rhode Island. But, but other than that, I don't have any, I don't have any common space. And so what I would like to say while we're saying, oh, you took that down. What I would like to say is that the county invests in common space. And that that's a place that we start to call community. Because we got a whole, we got hectares upon hectares of, of, of rural, of parks, of, I shouldn't say park space, of rural, of green, rural green space that I can't get to or that you can't get to.
And would you agree that it's not always optimal for those community gathering spaces to be in the floodplain?
I agree with that. Yeah, I agree with that. But I'm saying, I'm not even looking at it being in the world, because I'd say most of our community, most of our park space is in the rural part of the county and you can't get there without a car.
Yeah. And, and, and I think, I'm specifically, all of my comments are specifically to, to the growth area. You know, and, and so I think the other thing, you know, I sent a.
Real quick, Lottie, real quick.
Yeah, yeah, real, real quick.
I, we can talk offline.
But I think we need to go into strategies about how to, how to get there. And I think that needs to be a larger conversation.
If we get to the activity centers, there's actually a conversation.
Okay, let's roll onto that. So I think, so the, the general direction of the commission is that they should be separated. Right? Basically, we're taking staff's advice. And then just one thing I can't help myself, but after applying for lots of zoning, rezonings, there is a process that you go through, and I'm not saying what you're saying is wrong, but that idea of choosing places for future parks and those types of things comes about during the discussion. And that's where Parks and Rec is very helpful. The county Parks and Rec has that bigger view of in the development area, how are we going to create linkages? How are we going to create common spaces? This is what the public need is, for example, we need a soccer field here, we need this here. And they work with you as a process as part of the rezoning. So good to go. All right, let's jump to activity centers in the last, the next six minutes. Who would like to kick us off?
So in general, I, to me, there's a logic there. In, in, I think the term was used of hierarchy of, of, you know, the, the, the smaller ones, local, the community, and then the, the more regional ones. So I, so I, I agree with that. With that focus. The one that to me is a, it's a, it's a bit of a misnomer and I mean, you know what I'm going to say is, is the employment centers, because I don't think it follows that hierarchy. All of those are actually, you know, the, the, the local community and regional, they're, they're all, they're all employment centers of, of one sort or another. Just at different scales. So I'm not, I don't know that I have a great option for you and how to embed it. Is it a layer? Right now, it's just a separate center, right? It just, it doesn't follow the same logic in my mind, but that, that's my, my large overarching comment. I, I do have, you know, then you go into the attributes and so forth, and I can talk about that later, but there may be some others that want to chime in.
Yeah, and I think part of the language on that, page 24 talks about three-tier system for centers to guide the relative residential density and. So that doesn't actually include the employment center as part of those tiers, right?
But it's in the, it's in the overall heading, right? What do they call it? Activity and, activity and employment centers. I think that's what they all are.
Yep.
But then employment center is called out separately as a center. And that's where to me, there's a, a bit of a, a bit of a disconnect, but.
Local, community and regional makes sense. Employment, yeah, consider that. Okay. Any other thoughts on activity centers?
I've just had a quick one. In the, there's a whole list of objectives at the end of that, of how we're going to do this. So I just restate, I'm still concerned about what the county's investment is in making these happen. Something about what we're going to do to actually facilitate this happening besides just putting it in a plan. But I would like to add maybe in another action, which at the very end of incentivize the use of both natural and constructed green infrastructure to treat stormwater runoff.
Just obviously, one of the, we're asking that question is about investments. This is a broad thing of trying to use these as a place to sort of focus investment on. We get to the actions down below. I think that'd be a great time to talk about what actions you all would like to have the county do for individual investments or individual incentives. Or maybe we can postpone that discussion until the next time we come back to meet with you all.
That's fine. I have a quick suggestion on that. In incentives that I've developed in the past for the development community, I found it very instructive to have focus groups with the actual, just like we did for affordable housing, with those developers to say, would this incentivize you or not? Because we dream up things like, oh, that'll be great. They'll really like that. And they're like, nah, that's not an incentive. But I would like this thing.
Chair, I, I would just like, I would like to reinforce what Louis said about the employment centers. Every single of the ones from one to 26 on page 31, they have housing within a quarter of a mile. And so I think in our community, there is no distinct sort of downtown business district that only has office buildings in it. Or there is no place that has an industrial park, there used to be an industrial park, but we don't have one of those now. That every place that's listed from one to 26, you could walk to some housing, to some pot of housing in, in, in that area. And if I could just add in one thing, and where we say regional centers, there's nothing about a public or a civic space in those. So they're really big spaces, you're saying there's a big population there, but there's nothing to do there, but, but work.
Or go shopping.
Or go shopping. I just would, uh, this is like, you know, the plan, we're trying to break things into different topics. And it's just kind of an artificial way of doing that. Hopefully by the time we work our way through, you say, ah, there is a synthesis here. Cause then maybe it's just a pencil, a placeholder, because you use a description of it. And when you do that wonderful description, I thought I might see something in there about a gathering place. And so I'll just, I'll just give that to you as a, as a, as a, as a, a pin. And you don't have to, you don't have to justify it to me. It's just. But it's, it's a key point because Mr. Commissioner Murray was talking at one point about running to, to work and we wanted to be able to get there. I think part of what we're trying to do is, you'll see this when we get to the transportation chapter. We want to try and link transportation to these centers. And obviously, employment centers are a place that during peak traffic hour, a lot of people are trying to get to. So we want to try and work that and fold that in with larger transportation as well as what other types of investments that we might be talking about.
I did read the.
Chair, can I just mention one thing?
Yeah.
Since we're talking about activity centers, I just want to call your attention to a mistake we discovered in our draft chapter. The activity employment centers map and E did not include mistakenly, the local centers were left off. The PDF that's been uploaded to our website does have all of the local centers identified, just so y'all know. It's been updated. Yeah, why'd you leave them off? Just want to let you know that, that was an accident.
Got it. Thank you. Any other?
Comments? So just a little, little, one of the things that in here, it says that in many ways, this concept replaces the neighborhood model. The, the only.
Design guidelines?
Yeah.
Design guidelines?
Yeah. And when I looked at, when I looked through here and then I looked at the neighborhood model guidelines, the one, the one thing I saw that was missing was sensitivity to terrain. To terrain and, and the natural, the natural terrain of environment and to avoid ingrading. And, and that seems to be scrubbed out of here. And I don't know if that's because we already have sort of a critical slope ordinance, so that we felt that wasn't necessary. But I do think that when we do scrape everything flat, it does erase a sense of place. If you think of some of the great, great cities and places, some of them have significant terrain and that's part of what makes them what they are. So
I had a comment, I think, to address here. Can you put back the six?
To, oh, to the.
Yeah, your, your six bullet points of the, what we're addressing or trying to address. So the, so the attributes, so I, as I look at them, I, to me, they, they seem very helpful, right? You have a description, you, you have the, 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 the walk shed and, and centers, land use, heights and so forth. Parking is one of them. So my comment on parking is you, you do encourage structured parking, but that starts at the regional level. And I'm, and, and if I look at, you know, if I look at some of the examples, so I'm looking at page 29 of what you're calling the community center, which actually has, has some nice density, right? Six-story buildings and up to six-story buildings and so forth, which maybe could go higher. I'm just wondering if we don't start to encourage some kind of structured parking or district parking or some kind of way to begin to talk about that at the community level. Then goes back to the point that the several commissioners have brought up in terms of that helps you create amenities, whether it's, and, and you have them. So this is the, you know, they have the public civic and open spaces. In all of them, to some degree, even in the local centers, you have that. So I, so the parking will go hand in hand with that. The ability to create that would be if we, if we have some kind of district parking, structured parking. So I would, I would encourage you, I know, I know you talk about that in the, in the regional, but I think even in the. I think even in the community, I would encourage that.
Great. We, uh, we started three minutes late. We're now three minutes over. So I think we're good. Um, do you want me to try to, I can summarize the activity centers, logical hierarchy? Do we all agree that's a logical hierarchy? Questioning the employment centers and how that kind of wording fits into the three tiers. Feels like it's sort of overarching, uh, concern about the county's role and investments and what our actions are and staff said we'll get there. That's, that was a good thought. Um, what did I miss? Public civic space in regional centers. That's sort of a random comment I had down here. I don't remember the context. Okay, got it.
How do we create, how do you create community? We don't have natural places.
That's right.
We don't have natural places in the county to be, to be a, a, our, our space. You know, we don't have a pavilion. We don't have a downtown mall. We don't have a, a lawn, although the lawn is in the, is in Jack Jewett, but that's not really.
There is a, uh, that's one that, um, it isn't the, it's mentioned, civic spaces in the longer descriptions of those, of those land use types, but not in much of a form. And, and arts and parks is something I've talked with, uh, Mr. Barnes about in the past. The priority that we don't have much of, just like Mr. Vizzen said.
Awesome.
So, sir, we can go back at all to these, uh, these action items down below. Like, can, we've kind of ran out of time on those, so.
We're told they were later.
We're gonna, we're gonna see them later. We're gonna see it again.
Not to discuss actions now.
I didn't mean it quite like that harshly. No, I, I think, Commissioner Murray, yes, the intent is we'll come back to you, um, November 12th. November 12th. And a lot of what we'll be talking about is pages 33 on. Again, you're going to see this in the tempo that we try and work with you all on. We're going to have 10 chapters. There's going to be a policy section at the front end. There's going to be actions, objectives and actions at the back end. For the rural area and the development area, we split them apart because there's a lot of beat here. Hopefully, as we get to the other ones, we'll be able to tackle both policy and actions at the same time.
Awesome. All right.
And Chair, I found this email helpful today.
Yes.
The one that said, stop wandering and focus on these items.
Did I say that?
How did that go?
It kept me on one side of the street as opposed to across the entire highway.
All right, I'm gonna, uh, put us in recess until 6:00 PM. Thank you, staff. Great work. Are we live?
Yes, we are.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. The planning commission meeting for October 22nd, 2024. Um, and I'll just briefly read that the opportunities for public, for the public to access and participate in the hybrid meeting are posted on the Albemarle County website, on the planning commission homepage, and on the Albemarle County calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters for which comments from the public will be received. With that, could I ask for the role, please?
Yes. Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Bivins.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Claiborne.
Here.
Mr. Missile.
Here.
Mr. Carazana.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk.
Here.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, with that, I will move on to public comment on matters not listed on the public hearing agenda. Are there any comments from the public on items not listed on the agenda this evening? Anybody online?
No, sir.
Great. Okay, moving on, then we will go to the consent agenda. I think we have two items on the consent agenda, agenda, approval of draft meeting minutes, uh, from October 8th, and SE 2024-10 Penn Place Planting Strip Design Exception. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda, or is there an item that the commissioner would like to take off?
Mr. Chair, if I might, um, as, as the, as the commission may be aware, I had, uh, just distributed to the seats, or actually, Ms. Schaefer had distributed to the seats, a draft resolution to approve SE 2024-10 Penn Place Planning Strip Exception. And it's my suggestion that if the, uh, commission is inclined to approve the consent agenda, that it do so specifically noting that it's approving the, the draft resolution to approve the planning strip. Or, excuse me, the planning strip exception.
Got it. Great. If there's a motion, we will have discussion opportunities. But if there's a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move.
We have a second?
Second.
And that's to approve the consent agenda with the resolution on the planning strip.
Great. Any discussion?
Yes, I didn't want to pull this item at this, uh, late time, but, uh, on the planting strip, I just want to point out that, um, in, in my opinion, and I hope that staff will take this to under advisement or whatever you want to take it as, um, that there are other ways to meet this exception request. And one of them would have been to narrow the sidewalk. I've spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks for another client, looking at sidewalk standards and ash toe guidelines and rules and all of that, and ADA requirements, et cetera. And, um, the five-foot width of the sidewalk is intended to allow, say, two strollers to pass, you know, coming in different directions. But you can narrow the sidewalks. And you could also, um, even to meet ADA requirements, it just requires that you have a passing opportunity. So you can have a narrow sidewalk for a while, and then a wider section, then a narrow section. And in those narrower sections, that could be where your street trees go. Because as we're continuing to pave Albemarle County, we're losing trees. And so in this case, it could have been a nice leafy green walkway, and now it's not going to be. It's going to be another hot walkway with a bunch of grass in a strip. So I would just like to encourage staff to realize that the sidewalk is not sanct or sanct in every case. And there is not a requirement that sidewalks be five feet wide under ash toe and ADA requirements, just that there's a passing opportunity. So in the future, could we please try for staff to look at ways to vary the sidewalk rather than simply always getting rid of the street trees? So that's my comp, my long comment, but I'm still going to support this because it's too late to go back and redraw this right now.
Great. Thank you. So we have a motion, we have a second, we have some comments under advisement, any other discussion? Okay, Madam, could I have the role, please?
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Bivins?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move into the public hearing items, beginning with CCP 2024-1, Northern Albemarle Convenience Center. Could we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Michael Barnes, Director of Planning. I'm sitting in for David Finnis on these two items this evening, who, uh, had to be out of town. This project is the Northern Albemarle Convenience Center. Uh, it is a compliance with the Conference of Plan Review. With, when we have these conference plan reviews, uh, we're working, uh, to review against Virginia Code 15.2, uh, 2232. Oftentimes you'll hear these things referred to as 2232 reviews. And what we're looking at is we're considering the general location, character, and extent of the proposed public facility to ensure that it's in substantial accord with the adopted conference plan. And it's reviewed by the planning commission, and the commission's findings are forwarded to the board supervisor, board supervisors, but no further action is required of the board. The commission's action is only related to the consistency of the use to the comp plan, and this is not an action or a recommendation on whether the facility itself should be constructed. In general, and I, I'll go quickly through this. I know the applicant is one of my colleagues who gave you a deeper understanding of the proposal. Briefly, um, this is open six days a week, um, mostly from 8:30 to 5:30 in the winter to 6:30 in the summer. Its purpose is recycled material collections, sort of similar to what you find at the Ivy Convenience Center. Uh, there's a potential that they could do food waste or use cooking oil at some point in the future. Obviously, household bags, 32-gallon bags, you know, and people would put a ticket on for disposal and potential for annual special waste collection days. Uh, the idea is to have an attendant on site at all times, and, uh, there's a series of structures that you see there that, again, you'll be, uh, hear more about in the applicant's presentation. Uh, the proposed location, um, this is off the new Berkmar Drive Road, uh, where, uh, recently, uh, there was a infrastructure project to connect Rio Mills over to Berkmar and then discontinue the rest of Rio Mills, uh, and its old alignment, uh, down towards the river there. Property is zoned RA, and it's designated as RA in your comp plan. Uh, the site characteristics, uh, what you see in orange there is a 19, almost 20-acre site that was split by that new road that was created. The site that we're talking about is on the northern side of that road. You can kind of see the red star generally showing the location of the proposed facility on the property. Um, currently, uh, the property is undeveloped, mostly wooded, and it sort of slopes down from sort of on your screen there from left to right. The uses to the, to the north are rural or suburban in scale along Rio Mills Road. There is a existing and working stone quarry to the south. And then further to the south and to the, um, east are wooded sites. I think you'll note that the parcel on your screen there, the farthest down, uh, that's between Berkmar and, uh, 29 was recently timbered. The final thing I would say is that this parcel was part of a larger land that was proffered to the county as part of the Burke Hill rezoning. So it shows your conference of plan. You can sort of see the development area sort of surrounding this, but not inclusive of the area. This is the rural area. The concept plan for the site, again, sort of showing it here on the eastern part at the, sort of the intersection of the new Rio Mills Road alignment and Berkmar Drive. There was a community meeting, actually two community meetings, one with Places 29 North, CAC, and the other one with Places Rio, CAC. Uh, summary of the content comments. There was worry about impacts to adjacent properties, especially the idea of noise or odor or runoff or rodents. There's potential for traffic impacts. Rio Road, Rio Mills Road was identified by citizens as well as speeding and truck traffic concerns, um, on Rio Mills Road. And finally, there was a idea that potentially the, the site should be closer to the rural populations that it's really intended to serve. So those are some of the major concerns coming from the community meeting. With this particular project and the review against the Conference of Plan, the community facilities chapter of the Conference of Plan, uh, particular page 12-1 is the applicable language that we're looking at here. And specifically in this objective number one, it's the idea of providing public facilities and services in a physically responsible and equitable manner. And that typically, um, these types of facilities would probably be provided within the development area. And that the rural area residents should probably not anticipate levels of service delivery equal to that in the development area. But I think what I highlighted here is that the public facilities are allowed in the rural area in cases where it is not possible due to, to provide that in the development area due to physical constraints or the nature of the facility or the services provided. And, um, I would highlight that, uh, part of the idea here is to provide some trash and refuge collection to rural residents. They typically don't have, uh, urban pickup for recycling and, um, trash. So in this particular type of, uh, facility, providing that service to folks in the rural area is thought to be consistent with our general provision of, um, facilities and services. And I guess that's what I was really trying to make of this other point, that the, there was, there is a long-range solid waste, um, solution advisory committee final report that was created in 2015. And that was really looking to try and provide those solid waste management services to, to folks in the rural area. This map here, um, I was just noticing it's slightly out of date. Um, what it shows is four sort of service areas in these circles. The two blue ones represent, uh, at least this particular one, existing ones of Ivy and the one that is McIntyre, just next door to where we are now. The southern one probably should be in blue as well. That was the one that was, uh, approved for Keene several years back. And so that probably should be existing center blue as well. But the area that the, we're sort of talking about here is this northern site, the, the green circle that you see uh, above. And what it's really trying to do is provide service to sort of the areas north and west of 29, as well as north and east of 29. Staff found, uh, factors favorable to this, uh, that is consistent with the community facilities section of the comp plan, as well as the Long Range Solid Waste Solutions Advisory Committee's final report from 2015, that the location in the rural area is consistent with the comp plan, community facilities objective, and guidance for allowing the location of facilities in the rural area to address unique needs, and in this case, to provide convenient service to the rural area residents. And then the third one is that the location is, uh, provides a reasonable and accessible access to the northern portions of the county, via these commuter routes that are along there, and also provides convenient access for, uh, residents actually in the development area who might want to use this facility as well. Uh, we did not find, um, any factors unfavorable. We do note that the traffic may increase along Rio Road, but it's not anticipated to be a significant increase. Uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to, um, answer them, but our recommendation is, uh, to find that the location, character, and extent of this community center, um, and public facility, public use thereof as proposed to be substantially in cor, in accord with the Conference of Plan for the reasons identified as favorable in the staff report.
Great. Thank you. Uh, great staff report. Just one thing for, I don't know how many members of the public are here to speak to this, but just to underscore that the commission's action is only related to the appropriateness of the site for the proposed public use and is not an action or recommendation on whether the facility should be constructed, just as a reminder, because that was an early slide. So any questions for staff? Yeah.
I'm sure I should know this, probably just need my memory refreshed, but in the report, it said that this was the site that was proffered for a future high school. Where is that site now? Has it one been identified in the northern for that future high school? If it's going to be used for this, where's that new site at?
I know that there, I'm not, I don't have an answer for you on that question. Let me, let me come in. So there's two things that have occurred there. So it really needed to be a broader explanation that that's, that that site has been proffered for both county government or schools. Okay, so it's an and/or. It's not a, it's not a, a school, that wasn't simply for schools. Okay. And so what happened is that, remember when we did Center 2? Center 2 is the, is the, 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 the high school entity that could have been placed there. So instead of placing it there, we're placing it on the Lambs, on the Lambs Lane campus. There's, uh, there's been some conversation about reshaping the Lambs Lane campus and to remove some of the activities there that are not, um, that are inconsistent or not, or not, or not in compliant with an educational, with an educational campus. For instance, this is the only campus that has a watering, um, a wash, a vehicle wash section. It's the only campus that has a, a, a pretty large fueling session, uh, section. And it's also the only place that has a repair section. And so right now, the facilities, they're, they're in the process of, of relocating some of them over to, you know, where the Penny's is?
Yeah.
So some of it, some of it's going there, and then some of it may actually get built out and put a gas fueling in. Well, I guess gas and fueling is the same thing. Fueling and wash and maintenance area on, on another piece, on a part of this property.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yes, sir.
Um, do we have a sense of the, the southern center? So the one that's at in Keene, I guess that's not Keene or whatever that is down there. What the traffic is like there compared to what we're looking at here?
I would defer that question to the applicant.
Oh, to the applicant. It's because of the report, actually, the daily visits of Keene's site. I can't remember.
Oh, I did. Oh, that's right.
It is. I'd be saying 45.
It would be similar.
Well, I, in fact, this thing was, I think, part of the traffic generation that they were anticipating in this particular project was based off of the southern Keene one.
Great. Any other questions? I just had one question for clarification. So there was the, the concerns that you. So there was the, the concerns that you outlined that the community had raised in terms of rats and smells and those kinds of things. When, when would those concerns be addressed if it's not today?
I, first I will defer you to the applicant, but my understanding is they don't feel that that's going to be a problem. They think they can manage that.
But that, those concerns, maybe I'm wrong here, but those concerns are valid, of course, but not necessarily what's before us today, right? It may or may not impact, it doesn't really apply to the, the, the comprehensive plan, the substantial accordance with the comp plan.
Broadly speaking, no.
Okay. Okay, great. Any other questions? No? Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing and ask for the applicant's presentation. As a reminder, public will have a comment, have a chance to comment after the applicant's presentation. Please state your name for the record and general place of residence, please. Thank you, and you'll have ten minutes.
Thank you for having me. My name is Jeff Dumars. I'm the deputy director of facilities and environmental services with Albemarle County, living in the Redfields subdivision. Happy to be here talking about the Northern Convenience Center with you today. General outline of the agenda, covering, we're just going to cover much of what Michael covered, so we'll be brief, but talk about what the convenience center is, why it's located where it is, look at a little bit more detail, the proposed site plan, and then we did some visual simulation, simulations as well. And then we have team members here, Philip McCallips, Director of Solid Waste for the Solid Waste Authority, and then a member of our consultant team, Wendy Carably from TRC, available for questions after the presentation. So again, two thousand and fifteen, the Long Range Solid Waste Solutions Advisory Committee identified a pretty significant lack of facilities in Albemarle County, especially compared to neighboring communities and the lack of, of services to rural residents within Albemarle. Since that time, there's been investments in infrastructure, strategic investments, including the Ivy Transfer Station in two thousand and nineteen, the Ivy Convenience Center in two thousand and twenty-one, and the Southern Convenience Center in Keene in two thousand and twenty-three. Desired traits of a site for a convenience center, easily accessible, but also strategically located, and we will revisit the, the diagram that Michael presented. But also, we pick a site to limit impacts to the neighbors and surrounding properties. The convenience center is not a dump site, if you will. It is focused on bagged household waste. Also the opportunity for compostables, recyclable collection and periodic special waste stream collection, if, if appropriate. Again, the tag-a-bag household trash waste is a thirty-two gallon bag and costs to be comparable to a local hauler cost for the, the more urban residents, made available to, to rural residents and others. But tags are available for purchase from local merchants and by mail to be deposited. They're deposited in these self-contained compactors, which are specifically designed with a feed chute to limit the waste to these trash bag sizes. This facility will not accept commercial or construction waste. Again, hours of operation, six days a week, actually from eight to five, as there's not a seasonal timeframe being considered now. And would be coordinated with the other facilities throughout the county so that there's a consistent, consistently available facility throughout the county. At this time, anticipated to be closed on Wednesdays and open the other six days a week. So again, revisiting this, this diagram, it's obviously the county there. The blue dots are the, the ten mile radius and the, the two blue circles without the, the red concentric circle are the existing facilities. The, to the south, the Southern Convenience Center in Keene, to the west, the Ivy Facility. And then to the north, the, the proposed Northern Convenience Center. Without that facility, there are significant rural populations in the northern part of the county that don't have access to a facility within seven point five to ten miles. The location is, is strategically located to best serve residents broadly in the county. The site, again, was a, a proffered site. It is zoned rural and is located on Ryo Mill, off of, just off Burke Mar. The community-wide benefits is, is simply access to residential bag waste and recycling, recycling disposable for, for rural residents. And these centers are proven to reduce illegal dumping and curb open burning within, within the county, and this is important to achieving our climate action goals. The proposed site, we'll quickly go through this, you've seen this, on Ryo Mills off of Burke Mar, just north of the Places Twenty-Nine Ryo CAC, just south of the Places Twenty-Nine North CAC. Another diagram of the site with Seminole Trail bicycling north-south, the diagram, and then Burke Mar just to the west. The uses, again, reiterating, to the east and south are undeveloped forest lands, to the west is the luckstone Ravanna plant, the aggregate supplier. Directly north is a farm lot with open pasture and forested lands. And then the northwest corner is, is where the beginning of the adjacent residential parcels. Zooming into the site, north of Ryo Mills Road, the, this land is approximately eight point three acres. And one of the reasons the development is focused to the east, adjacent to Burke Mar, is to maintain a three hundred to four hundred foot buffer to the nearest residential property boundary and or structure to maintain a significant boundary. The site includes three point one acres, so less than half of disturbance on the site, which breaks down to point eight acres of fenced area, point three acres of entry road, point four acres of stormwater treatment facility, and then one point four acres of regenerative forest, if you will, on the sloped areas that we'll talk about a little bit. So zooming in again, entering the site to the north off of Ryo Mills Road, you drive up the entry corridor and circulate facility in a counterclockwise fashion. There's the lanes to access the compactors and bypass lanes. There's two self-contained compactors. There's an attendant station. The facility will always be made, there will always be an attendant at the facility when the, when it is open. There's a thirty-foot wide entrance corridor with security fencing around, completely around the facility. And also, there's been a commitment made for decorative fencing to, to provide screening, which we'll demonstrate. There's ten parking spaces, one van accessible spaces directly adjacent to the recycling containers, eight standard size and, and two of the large eighty cubic yard recycling containers. There's a stormwater facility, significant, and then all of the sloped areas are proposed with native trees and, and reforested, reforested of buffer. And then we wanted to demonstrate the, the screening of the facility. So this is an aerial view looking just basically over the intersection of Burke Mar and Ryo Mills Road, looking to the north of the facility, if you will. We did two visual simulations, one from the, the entry drive, looking up the drive, demonstrating that most of the activity within the facility will be completely screened from Ryo Mills Road and the entry at the completion of construction. Within five to ten years, when the, the native planting flourishes, the, the facility should be completely visually screened from Ryo Mills Road. The other visual simulation that we completed was from Burke Mar, looking to the west. Again, at the completion of construction, the visual, the, the site should be well screened from views from, from the, the road corridor. And then again, within a short period of time, the forest, the reforestation should most complete, mostly block of views into the site. With that, we have our team here to take questions and happy to, to speak more. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Start down at your, this end. Commissioner Moore?
Uh, really just kind of small questions. I'm kind of curious about it. Will there be, like the IVMUC, any opportunities for electronics recycling ever during the year or?
Sir, I'm sorry, if you could come up and just state your name, thank you.
Phil McCallip, Director of Solid Waste for the Ravanna Solid Waste Authority. I live in the city. Yes, that's something we consider. There's some logistics constraints with doing some of those special collection events.
Can you talk into the microphone?
Apologize. It's something we could consider, but we'd need to manage the breadth and extent of it, like for things like tires or whatever. We use a lot of our existing heavy equipment to manage those materials. But it's certainly something we can consider.
Yeah. And then I was curious too, so this is not a place where you could take like an old couch or something? This is sort of household only?
It is not. We would like to continue to direct people to the Ivy Solid Waste and Recycling Center, where we have the facilities to manage that.
And then the last question is, I saw Sam in the presentation, is he, is he a worker or?
No.
Excellent.
Thank you. Commissioner Bevins?
I, I will say thank you for this. This is, this is, this is something that that part of the county has wanted for, it's, it's been, it's been recycling envy for a number of years. So hopefully if we move it through here, it'll help with some other envy up there. But on your app, on your, uh, attachment six, on the north sort of west side, there's this little box that's at the edge of the, of this, it's not up there, it's here, it's this little box right up there that's within your property line. And it's not called out on anything, but I'm wondering what that little box is there?
I believe that's a garage on the property up there.
That you'll, that will remain in use? Because there's no road right now to get there.
Uh, I believe you would access that off of the driveway of the property owner.
Okay. But it's inside our, it would be inside your, your property line?
It would not be. Our intention, as we did at the Southern Convenience Center, is to basically set up a license with the county that we would take responsibility for the developed area of the site. For example, and the county may choose to set up a open space easement or something on the other. That's what we did at Southern Convenience Center. So we would have no interest in doing anything on that portion of the site.
Great. Commissioner Murray?
Are any streams on the parcel?
There are not.
Commissioner Clayburn?
Thank you for the presentation. Just one question, just from my knowledge, could you share any insights on other parcels that were evaluated before landing on this one?
I don't have that information at this time.
Okay. Your consultant doesn't either, or?
We discussed what, this was with the Director of Facilities and Environmental Services. We looked for, it was discussed loosely, but I don't know if they went through a detailed property survey of what was up in that area and available. So I really can't answer specifically.
Uh, because I'm asking because I heard there was a community comment, I guess it was in Mr. Barnes' presentation about the site's appropriateness in terms of serving adequately folks that live in the rural area. And when you look at the, the aerial, there's a lot of density, not too far away, but I'm suspecting those folks already have services to take care of their solid waste. And so, I hate to put it bluntly, was it a matter of, is this land I already own, so let's use that versus is this truly going to serve the rural constituents in the way that was intended to? That's where I'm going with the question.
So looking at the diagram, it was strategically located there to be concentric in the county and, and serve the most residents.
Thank you.
Can I just go off of that a little bit? You, you mentioned, this is a very compelling diagram, because it, you know, it just, the overlaps look perfect. The question, I think, at least what I was hearing was, is it actually best located to serve the rural area?
That's correct.
Or did you not necessarily consider that fact? It was more about this diagram and the coverage, regardless of whether it was development area or rural area?
I, I think it's both. So it is the, the goal to cover all areas of the county, and this was next on the list, if you will. So there would be future plans to locate additional facilities, to, to, to provide facilities for the entirety of the county.
Got it, thanks. Commissioner Carradona? Question?
I don't have a specific question on that. I did, my question is, where, where does the recycling material go to? What, what facilities is?
Uh, so the, you'll, let me see if I can get a figure here briefly. Oops, there. The two long containers, those are metals, aluminum beverage cans and mixed metals, and those are taken by Gerdau directly to their facility in Roanoke. The other containers that are on a diagonal plus the larger compactor, the glass is taken out to Ivy where periodically strategic materials comes and collects truckloads of it, takes it back to their sorting cullet facility down in Wilson, North Carolina. The plastics go to a sort facility in Raleigh, North Carolina. And then all the fiber products, the newsprint, office paper, mixed paper and cardboard, currently are going to a paper mill south of Roanoke, or Richmond, excuse me.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioner Farah?
I don't have any questions. It's the, basically the same design as the one in Keene, which I quite enjoy and just used on Sunday. I mean, the only, it's really just a quick comment. I, and, and this is, this is really probably not under your control, but it, and maybe something to think about for the comp plan, which is that we, we've done this facility and you've got this stormwater management pond, but there could have been an opportunity to have that circular, where you drive around that vegetated planting area, that could have been recessed potentially to be a rain garden. Maybe we could have used permeable pavement so that we didn't need this big stormwater pond. So as, because so many people visit this, it could have been a demonstration site. Like we have bioswales here at our county office building. And I just thought, you know, that could have been a nice opportunity to use that vegetative space for education or even like a zero escaping demonstration of like how to use native plants that are, are drought tolerant. So just a little, you know, and, and when I've asked this about the Keene site when it was under development, they said something along the lines of it was value engineered out or we don't have the money to, to do that. But those kind of things that I just described actually cost less than traditional stormwater management ponds with all the piping and clean out that's required periodically. So I like your design, it works really well. I just wish it could be a little bit more on the green side.
So the, the plan is not finalized?
Okay.
We can, as part of final design, take those comments and, and see what we can do.
Yeah, it could be a really great site for our education and demonstration. Thank you.
Yeah, plus one, that, that was a great idea. One thing, I had the same question about, well, a similar question about the stormwater. It sounds like it is a wet pond envisioned as a wet pond? No, it's a dry pond?
It is dry.
Dry pond, yeah. I figured that from the rendering, it looks a little brown. There's so much grading that just is in place to help that, to create that pond. And obviously, if you can minimize that through your recommended, I guess, I don't know, biofilters, things like that.
Yeah, low impact development.
Yeah, then you're going to reduce, I would imagine, your costs significantly, if it's, if it's possible. Plus, you would possibly be able to keep some of the green space green as opposed to, you know, grading it all. Great, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, you'll have a chance to come back up after the public comment if you're interested in responding to any of those. Is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on this project? Please come forward, state your name, you'll have three minutes. The light will turn yellow when you have one minute left. Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Jennifer Marshall. I am the resident of the adjacent property next to the proposed site. I see the circles and all the graphics, et cetera, and I too question, even though it shows a perfect visual overlap, wouldn't it be better suited further out? even though it shows a perfect visual overlap, wouldn't it be better suited further out rurally? As a resident of the neighboring area, I have been there for over twenty five years. All of my neighbors have private trash service. So in the comment that it's seven to five mi- seven to ten miles to a area to throw your trash away, it actually is curbside. Everyone has private service. Our neighborhood areas that are uh, close to us also are Woodbrook, Hollymead Forest Lakes and the townhomes at the Hollymead Center, which all also have private. I can't imagine that these folks are going to stop their trash service or their private dumpster use that they have at these facility locations where they live and bag their stuff up to have a drive down to this area. Um, one of the things that I did not hear mentioned was the traffic report. Um, I was at the last meeting and I had a concern about the traffic as well as the blind spot that's at the top of the hill turning into that area. According to VDOT, a traffic study was ordered and it has not yet been done. I feel like as you have gotten this far into this with all the graphics, all the research, all the dollars that have been spent so far for the project management, that it's very curious that this has not been done. Um, several years ago, when the connection road was put in, the traffic increased a lot. I jokingly call it now it's an expressway to Walmart. However, it's where I live. And now looking at this and seeing who is actually going to use it, it really is not going to be the neighbors that that area. And I feel like if you're looking for, if you would pull that area, you would see that most people are not going to be coming in to use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak to this? Are there any online?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll ask the applicant if they'd like to come up and address any of these questions. One was location, the other was traffic. Any further questions from the commission of the applicant?
I I guess I would like to you to come up and address the comments, um, if you would.
Thank you.
Um, so what I'm particularly interested in is just, um, so this site, this idea of this Northern Convenience Center was a result of our solid waste study and with a lot of engagement around that and that went on for several years. So it didn't just come out of nowhere. But I guess I'm, could you guys say just a little bit more about demand, like how you identified that? You've got your circle of area served, but I guess could you maybe elaborate a little bit more on the idea of demand? And and just also briefly, even if people do have curbside pickup of co-mingled recyclables, we all know that that of the recycling rate is not very good in terms of percent actually recycled because a lot of material ends up stuck together. So you guys are the experts, so I'd like to hear from you.
I'd also just like to, so you can do it all at once, just add the question about the traffic report and what your thoughts are on traffic report. Thank you.
Hey, can you say you have to state your name one more time? Why don't you start talking again?
Phil McHale, Director of Solid Waste for the Ravanna Solid Waste Authority. Uh, we're working to get the traffic um, study set up. Um, it just hasn't been accomplished yet. But it is something we're working toward. Uh, and we will get it done. So um, towards demand. Uh, it's hard to, I don't want to wave my hands. Um. It is right next to the developed portions, but the lobes of that sort of bisect the northern part of the county to the east and the west. And unless the alternative would be to have one eastern northeastern facility and one northwestern facility to serve those both separately. But one thing I kind of want to point out that we see here at McIntyre is that just because it's new development doesn't mean that they have recycling service. A lot of multifamily use um, facilities. I know some of those are townhome or condo type developments or apartment complexes won't really have or haven't always had or haven't consistently had access to recycling. So even though those developed areas, I suspect we are going to see traffic from those customers coming from those areas because maybe they prefer the source separated recycling versus co-mingled. But possibly also because they don't have access to the service, even though they're living in a fairly new, modern facility.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, anybody online? I think I already asked that question. The answer is no.
There's not.
Okay, great. I think with that, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the commissioners for discussion. Commissioner Firehawk, would you like to start us off?
I think I've said everything I had to say.
All right. Commissioner Carazana? Commissioner Clayburn?
No, I guess I will say one thing. Um, I was almost going to vote no, but the gentleman kind of just convinced me to vote yes. But I do find it surprising that we don't have like data around that, like a demand study or something like that to say yes, this site is appropriate because we know these residents over here only twenty five percent have recycling service. And it feels like we're just kind of just anecdotal gut checking. So I'm just kind of flagging that in the future. This this feels like that be this a common practice to have data around those kinds of decisions. So.
Commissioner Murray?
Yeah, I mean, just looking at the the map here, I'm seeing that there is a significant part of the rural area in the northwestern part that is uncovered. And then I can't imagine anyone from from that area driving to to bring anything there. So it does seem like it it'd be nice to have some data about how that was decided. And you know, and and why it was felt that the northwestern part of Alamo County was wasn't as well served is to provide this circle that mostly overlaps with our our growth area.
Uh, just make a quick tag on to what you said. Um, it it's true that, yeah, like, so let's say you live in the very northern part of the county. But there are a lot of people taking trips to Charlottesville and or going down twenty nine. So like, I don't live near the Keen Center. I live in the very tip of the county. I'm not even in the circle. But I make a a just a jog that way on my way to Charlottesville to take my trash and take my unco-mingled recyclables. Um, so I could just see, I can see it as a stop off, even though it seems far. But you would be on your way somewhere, you'd stop off and and drop that stuff off.
If you if you think about the way the roads run on that section of the county, though, it's it's there's not a really great direct route from from that north that northwestern side. I mean, you could go all the way up to the thirty three and then back down, or you could come all the way down to, I mean.
Maybe we need another one, too.
But anyway.
Commissioner Bevins?
I was just sort of get us to look to the future here. So number one, for me, this is close to a regional center. Hollymeat is a regional center. And so we've been talking about the kinds of um, amenities that we want to have at regional centers. And there's an awful lot of at the Hollymeats, at the Hollymeat Center there, there's a bunch of people that come there and this is on the way there. I will remind us that thanks to um, the University Foundation that there's going to be a cut through on Burke Mar that's going to go from from across Airport Road where I think there's going to be a circle. And then it's going to go up through the I I'm not trying to be a smart butt here, but I think something like three hundred or two hundred and some odd fifty units up there at some point at some some someday when it's all built out. I think I'm somewhere right.
In, I'm sorry, and where?
In North Point. Oh, no, no, in in the foundation's.
North Fork?
In the in North Fork.
Fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred. So it's going to be four, oh, four, that's even more. It's going to be fourteen hundred. Then on the narrow side of the road, there's North Point, which is still developing. So I think in a in many ways, there's a good reason why you're going to have people either coming into town that way or going up to the airport or going up to work at either one of the the many employees up there. So for me, this made sense for me. This will not that I this depends on what I do, but it is a those of us who remember what Ryle Mills Road used to look like and that it was sort of the rural dumping zone and that now you're giving people a place to come to a place to recycle stuff. I think that's an improvement for me, at least. That's an improvement for sort of the environment up there. I will also remind us, you were some of us were talking about dry um, water, whatever you call those things. Um, but that that whole Burke Marl extension has got various places where they've created water treatment order, treatment, catch, catchment areas on others, on either side of that. So that's consistent with how they're treated, dealing with water going up Bark Mar. It may not be the optimal way, but it's there are several water.
From water ponds?
Yes, thank you. Some water ponds, some water ponds going up Bark Burke Mar on on either side of it right now that's doing that. So for me, I have to say, this feels like, yes, oh, uh, just the road up from there, there's a pretty good size a apartment. I'm going to say apartment. I don't know what it is, but townhouse community right up the next road up. So you're starting to see you're starting to see people in the development area who over the next probably ten years were actually going to be very close to that as a new center. So no, it doesn't answer the question, what do you do at Earlysville Center? Earlysville and sort of well, for Union, but what you're doing is sort of closing, you're bringing people to that to that center star there. So I think uh, it's reasonable. I also say I don't imagine that the traffic going into the um to to the convenience center will be anywhere like it goes into the quarry. So the quarry, which is at us, it's all a great deal shorter distance from that intersection. Those have got to be very different vehicles creating all kinds of noise and dust and whatever gets created at at um, at quarries that'll be very different, a different kind of mobility and different kind of traffic that will go into this to this center. The last thing I will say, well, yes, I can appreciate that people say there's curbside, there's curbside pickup. But I will also say the curbside pickup is fickle and if they take recyclable. There's a number of curbside pickups that say, no, we only want your trash. We do not want your recycle. Or or if you put anything in your trash, it's not going to be, it's not going to be recycled. We're going to shoot the whole bag as trash. And so what we're giving is people to make the decision that we're we're encouraging, as you want to encourage people often, they're making the decision that, yes, I can do my trash, but I can also on my way into town or or, you know, to Best Buy or whatever it is over there down there or to Walmart or whatever it is over there. I can stop in there and put my 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 papers, my bottles, my cans and things like that. And so I think we're building that kind of recycling muscle into the community of that part of the county. And so for me, Chair, I'm I'm fully in support of this. And thank goodness, we don't have the Ryle Mills dump dump any longer.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore?
Uh, echoing some comments I've heard before, I do think that um, just the way people drive in, when you live in a rural area, you often come to town for things. That's the way this works. And while there is no, I mean, like, it's not like we live on a grid here because we're in a hilly area and there's a lot of curvy roads that go all over, but if you were to pick a place that a lot of people could drive through with a short detour, this is a pretty good one. Uh, whether it's coming from the east like Stoney Point, whether it's coming from points northwest like Free Union or Boonsville or whatever. And so it makes a lot of sense. Plus, there are, I know, a lot of people in the county. I know several personally who, yeah, have curbside trash, but still take their recycling into the city, into McIntyre. So this makes that trip less uh, because it'll be closer by. Um, and so that part's uh, I think a a nice addition. Uh, I do appreciate that within the parcel, it's located about as far from the nearest houses can be. It looks like a good five or six hundred feet, which I know anything is is not uh, wonderful to have next door perhaps, but it seems like this is a pretty pretty darn far setback. Uh, and so I appreciate the thought that went into that.
Awesome. Thanks. Um, have I gotten everybody's comments? I think so.
Except for yours.
All right, I got a couple. Uh, one, and just the stormwater, just to echo what Commissioner Firehawk mentioned, I think it is a cool idea to potentially have a kind of, I don't want to maybe a stretch to call it a living laboratory, but something that might be educational and that might save a lot of uh, grading and help it lay lightly on the land. Um, I'm encouraged to hear that the traffic study will be done, which obviously I think is is key. Um, also interesting with the traffic, I I live in North Garden, so we use the Keen Recycling Center instead of going to the Ivy landfill.
We used to drive to Ivy.
Less traffic going in that direction and there is going the other direction. So holistically, it'll be interesting to see. I I tend to think that it's actually going to help traffic in a sense, maybe not immediately around there, but for the county, bigger picture, I think it may. And then uh, and just to, for educational purposes, part of the analytics and part of thinking about data, as you mentioned, and I would imagine there's a lot that went into this that we're not really seeing that would be helpful in a staff report summarized somehow, like we looked at all these different things. That would help us understand it, but also when and if, when it's built, I think you've done surveys before of people's where they're coming from and how that uh, affects the location for the future, for the next one. So it'd be interesting to see, are we getting a lot of folks that are coming from the 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 development areas? Are we getting mostly rural? And how that impacts maybe the next location? Just a thought. All right. Uh, with that, would anybody like to make a motion? We're essentially counsel help.
So I'm wondering if the presentation, if you could put the last slide from the presentation that I think has the language. So if the motion could be in the form of moving that the commission find that and then what's on the slide?
Great. Would you like to give that a shot?
Chair, I move that the commission recommend, that the commission find that the location character and an extent of the Northern Alamo Riveral Convenience Center, public facility and public use thereof as proposed to be in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan for the reasons identified as favorable factors in this staff report.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Now, we'll call the roll, please.
Yes. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Bevins?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Clayburn?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, with that, we will move on to SP twenty twenty three dash seventeen Walnut Creek Substation. And I'll ask for the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michael Barnes, Director of Planning, again, standing in for uh, David Benish, who did the staff report. Uh, this is for SP uh, twenty twenty three seventeen Walnut Creek Substation. It's a special use permit. Uh, the proposal is to construct new substation by Dominion Energy Virginia. It's located on Lynchburg, Old Lynchburg Road, sort of near the intersection, just north of the intersection of Red Hill Road. The property is owned rural areas and the special use permit under the um, section she there is for energy and transmission facilities. Um, I'm sure the applicant will speak a lot more about the actual proposal, but just as a um, general overview, uh, the site development will require removal of trees for the substation and significant grading. Total area of the site is about uh, ten point five, nine five acres, of which about four point nine will remain either wooded or undisturbed. Uh, the substation equipment itself is around thirty five feet or less. There are two, I think they're called H poles, that are going to be seventy five to a hundred feet tall. And those are consistent or maybe slightly shorter than the existing uh, transmission lines in the area. There will be one twenty four by seventy foot building. Uh, it's kind of a prefab building that will be used for housing the substation's controls. There will, the whole site will be surrounded by a twelve foot high perimeter skirt, perimeter security, security fencing. And outside of that fencing, there'll be landscaping around the perimeter of new plantings in an effort to screen um, the facility. The substation itself, the base material will be, um, you know, be covered with gravel. And stormwater management will be provided, but it is subject actually to DEQ um, annual standards specifications as opposed to a county um, review of water protection ordinance. Uh, existing conditions on the site, um, it's really three parcels that have been obtained by Dominion Energy. There were houses on the property that if not, haven't already been removed, um, there will be in the process of being removed. The we're area four of the uh, rural area. And surrounding this to the south, uh, across Red Hill Road is Mount Olivet Church. Um, there are a series of uh, private homes um, on the property or surrounding the property. And to the north, um, there is a um, a private home that has a home occupation. There was a community meeting held on January thirty first. Uh, about ten people attended the meeting. Uh, some of the comments were concerned about change the rural character of the area, the visibility of the site, either from adjacent properties of the roads, potential noise impacts, environmental impacts related to erosion or runoff from the site. And a concern about a potential negative impact, the adjacent home occupation that has the small arts room. This is a picture of the site itself, uh, superimposed. This is a picture of the site itself, uh, superimposed over an aerial photography. Uh, the next picture kind of shows, uh, the landscaping plan, uh, as well as the grading plan for the property. Um, you can see the fairly, oops, excuse me. Fairly extensive, uh, grading to create the pad, uh, for the site as well as stormwater facility. Um, and there is, um, vegetated buffers consistent with the ordinance and in some places in excess of the ordinance around the, uh, perimeter of the site. Uh, with all special use permits, uh, applications, we follow the following standard evaluation criteria. Um, and we found that there's no substantial detriment, uh, whether the proposed use will be, uh, that there is no substantial detriment to the site, um, that the character of the nearby area is relatively speaking unchanged, um, that the proposed special use permit is in harmony with the purpose of the intent of the chapter, uh, that this, uh, and whether or not this is a proposed use that will be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Based on that evaluation, um, we felt that the landscaping along the eastern and southern property lines, um, could be improved or augmented uh, with additional taller plants than, um, had been proposed. Um, we have also provided, uh, recommended condition of approval that would require the planning director, myself, to approve the final landscaping plan to ensure that it, um, is sufficient with what's being shown here prior to the issuance of a building permit. Um, there has not been a documentation or verification of the noise levels of, that will be generated from the site. And in part, that is because they're still working to try and get the, they haven't actually identified the specific types of transformers that they would, um, use on the site, but we're gonna require a condition that they, um, provide, uh, a noise study to ensure that the decibel levels will be below fifty dBh at the nighttime, um, hours and that below sixty-five dBh during the daytime hours at the property lines. Um, but it should be noted that public facilities such as substations are exempt from noise regulations of the county code. Factors favorable for the property, the project helps meet utility needs and supports continued electric power availability and reliability. The location is immediately, the location is immediately adjacent to the existing two power lines in the area, um, and right-of-way limits. Um, and so thus, it's sort of, uh, the impact and change, it's similar to the impact of the current facilities in the area. Third, that the visibility of the site can be minimized, we believe, through adequate landscaping and plantings. Uh, factors unfavorable, the applicant has not documented the sound levels, as I mentioned, to be generated from the facility. However, as a condition of approval, requires that this information may be provided prior to the issuance of building permit. Uh, additional landscaping, we feel, um, should be provided along the eastern and southern, um, property lines. However, uh, as again, the condition of, of approval requires that, um, that I approve that, um, if they do provide a revised landscape plan. And, and I should note, um, I did have a conversation with one of the representatives from Dominion today, and I think they are, we're gonna talk about beefing up that landscaping along their, uh, the adjacent property line some. Um, and finally, that the site will have some visual impacts until that landscaping matures. Um, we do have a recommendation, um, for approval with the following conditions. And, um, and those were provided to you in your staff report, essentially, um, that the, the project needs to be, um, developed in a substantial accord with the concept plan, uh, that the, uh, land disturbance, um, which includes but not limited to the grading excavation and fill of the land and felling of trees and removal of stumps shall be limited to the areas of the limits of disturbance on the concept plan. That minor modifications with the approval of the zoning administration or the director of planning of the concept plan that do not conflict with the essential, uh, element listed above may be made to ensure compliance with the zoning ordinance or state and federal laws. The second condition is that the planning director's approval of final landscape plan, um, be prior, be provided prior to the issuance of a building permit or the start of construction. Three, that the submittal of a sound study or other documentation to the satisfaction of the planning director must be provided to demonstrate compliance with the decibel levels, uh, limits of the zoning ordinance for rural area properties prior to the issuance of a building permit or commencement of construction. I believe that's my last slide, even though it won't move forward. So I do have a motion for you all, uh, when you, uh, get to that point of your discussion. Are there any questions that you might have?
Great, thank you. I don't remember where I started last time, but I think it was, right? So we'll go down to Commissioner Moore, any questions?
Uh, not for staff.
Thanks, Commissioner Vivid.
So, th- thank you for that, by the way. Um, in your, in, in your, uh, when you were talking about decibels, you had, you, in your report or in your comments to us, you had specific ranges. But in your recommendations, you replaced the ranges with just the, the category of rural. But I thought I saw a footnote on what you presented in the point, in the, presented in the report that there was no necessary boundary or upper limit on decibels for electric, electric utility functions.
Correct. So I think the idea is that the substations typically are not required in the ordinance, but, uh, obviously rural area uses do have the sound limits, and so we're trying to apply that to.
So we will apply the rural use, so we don't have to apply the upper decibels because you're saying under the rural use, that'll cap it, I think it was at fifty-five at night and sixty-five during the day?
Correct.
Okay, so that effectively is?
Effectively, we're, we're applying rural area, uh, noise, um, limits.
Limits, okay.
To this substation.
Okay.
I did have a quick follow-up question. I was wondering with, with, um, do we make any distinction with, um, sort of constant, uh, low-frequency hums, or is it just straight-up decibel measurement?
In this case, we're working to try and, uh, for, uh, the dBh level and not, uh, I, I appreciate what you're asking of.
It's a little technical, I know.
Right. Commissioner Vivid is again?
I'll be quiet for a second.
All right, Commissioner Murray?
Um, I know that we, we're gonna go back through our lighting ordinance at a later time, um, but I, I was wondering, you know, and maybe this is a better question for the, the applicant, but what's gonna be done in terms of review of the lighting for this facility?
So the, um, lighting is something that, uh, was reviewed as part of the application. They will have to do full cutoff lighting for the, the property.
And same spillover requirements on adjacent properties.
And they did provide a lighting plan that showed that at the property line, there was no light, uh, zero wood candles at the property line.
Better than the ordinance, right? Thank you. Commissioner Carazan?
So, the only question I have for staff is the, I didn't see in your, in any of your comments, um, or recommendations, the, um, change of the landscape. Um, so, so I guess there was some conversation, there would be some increase in the landscape buffer?
Or at least the types of trees that were, were going on. Um, so, one of the major concerns that has happened with the site is, um,
Well, I get to, let me, I don't wanna belabor the point. So you did, you did have a, you did, one of your points, what was it, it requires, uh, still, it still requires landscape approval?
Ah, so I managed to find my laser pointer.
Okay.
So basically, uh, we're looking to try and get, um, a variety of plantings that would, uh, be taller in nature. And I think the concern was the area that's sort of, I'm trying to highlight here, where there's a, the adjacent property is slightly higher and you see a cut slope dropping down into the site. That's fairly steep, two and a half to one slope. And, um, the applicant is worried about, uh, planting larger vegetation in this area because it may fall on that steep slope and fall on the fence. So they've proposed it, proposed a type of planting here, it was, it was a mixture of a couple of different species, um, uh, ranging in shrubs that would be at maturity about twenty feet tall. Uh, that was what the, the area, we were like, trying to find a way to increase the, the capacity of the landscaping in the area. Um, I understand that that, what they've proposed does meet the minimum standards of the ordinance, correct? But, oh.
Ye- yes, this will have to go through site plan review, and part of that will be the evaluation of the screening proposed at the plantings, needing to be from approved list to achieve the minimum screening requirement.
So, well, that's the clarification that I was looking for, i- in the landscape approval, whatever modifications that you're expecting that are not quite shown here, you would be applying at that point.
Right. And that typically does, y- at this point, it's, it's too conceptual. You really need to get down into the weeds, literally, to, to figure out which plants to do, where, put them.
Appreciate it.
Awesome. Commissioner Firehawk?
Yes, can, so on that sound decibels, um, I, I understand that, you know, you have this condition that it will have to meet with your satisfaction, I, I guess. I'm just trying to understand, like, well, what if they do their sound tests and it doesn't meet? Then what, what do we do next? We said it needs to meet it, so then what if it does not?
Uh, it's a good question, and in looking at the condition, excuse me, and looking at the condition, it's possible it could be, uh, worded slightly differently to simply reference that the facility would comply with Section four eighteen, and that has all those provisions.
Right, and that, so that they have to meet it, not that, like, it said they should, but, yeah. Maybe we could change that slightly.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry.
I'm just looking for a pen. Although I lost my pen.
You good? I just had a couple of, like, one question, just to go off of that. You, there, there are a few of the conditions, I think, that, I don't know, I may be misreading it, but there's a lot that's placed on the planning director. And I'm curious to the, your point, just to re, is there a way to reference a section of the ordinance as opposed to putting this on the planning director?
Um, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of your.
No worries, I just, I felt like a fair amount of the, of the conditions, um, referenced and, and put a lot of emphasis on the viewpoint of the planning director, are there ways? Like, for example, planning director approval of the exterior lighting photometrics plan.
So.
Plan must be in compliance with section.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that that condition is really needed or necessary because, uh, one of the things we, we were just discussing is, at the time, uh, uh, last week, week prior, there was still some question about whether or not a site plan was going to be required. We've looked at this more, and the requirements of a site plan are, if there's required parking, well, there is no required parking for this, or if there's a change in the entrance proposed, and this has a change in the entrance to a public street proposed.
Got it.
So that will automatically trigger the site plan, which then automatically triggers the landscape provisions, the screening provisions and, and those other things. So we may need to work with some of these conditions to make sure that they're not redundant to what's already there, or to clarify that it's going to four eighteen or four seventeen, which the right, right, uh, section is. From what I'm hearing is, you want screening that meets the requirements of the ordinance, and you want lighting that meets the requirements of the ordinance, and you want sound that meets the requirements of the ordinance, and we can make sure that the conditions are written appropriately to account for anything before we go to the board supervisors. Yes.
Awesome. I had one, one other, I guess, wording-related question where it says, minor modifications with the approval of the zoning administrator and director of planning. And you may say, this, because it's now a site plan, this is not an issue, but, um, to the concept plan that do not conflict with that essential element listed above may be made to ensure compliance with the zoning ordinance. What is that essential element?
That's, that's fairly standard language, if, if I'm not mistaken. And what we're trying to do there is, the concept plan wasn't reviewed as a site plan, so maybe something doesn't need a setback or a height limit or some other requirement and needs to be changed in order to comply with the ordinance. It puts the, potentially puts the applicant in a catch twenty-two of, I can't comply with the zoning ordinance. I, I can't comply with the special use permit if I comply with the zoning ordinance. So we, we put a, a safety provision in there that the zoning ordinance wins.
Okay, got it. Okay.
So do we have any other situations where, um, you know, our sound ordinances, you know, I, I think in many ways are geared towards, you know, like, loud music venues or other things. Um, but I think that for, for there are situations like this where, you know, as Nathan pointed out, a low persistent hum or things that have, um, uh, infrasound, you know, I'd say, just this, this past summer, my wife and I were, we're botanizing an area with very large power lines, just stopping into those things for just a little while. Um, it's hard to describe, but it makes you feel nauseous. I mean, it's like the, just the, the sound of it. And I don't know if I, I doubt it has any actual health effects, but just, there is something with that low persistent thing that like, it doesn't make you feel right. And I can imagine someone living next to that and, you know, like, how that feels, so, um, I'm just wondering if our sound ordinances, which are really geared towards, you know, things like, you know, loud decimal level. Uh, decimal level are really the right thing to apply in this situation?
Any thoughts?
We're not sound experts.
Chair, good.
Good point there, yeah, yes.
Can we go back to fence, go not go back to, since we never went there in the first place? But it mentioned you have fence, you have fencing, or this project's gonna have fencing, and we're saying it's gonna have fencing. So we just heard from the, um, the convenience center that they're gonna have decorative fencing. Is this going to be, do we know whether or not we're asking for decorative fencing? Since there are people on the, on the northeast side of this, or, and also on the, no, actually, you're not close to the road. Um, uh, or are we just asking for chain link fest, you know, the standard chain link fence?
The applicant, I know the presentation they're gonna provide to you will show the type of fencing they're proposing.
Thank you.
I, uh, I would just add that one of the options for, uh, meeting the screening requirements is you can use fencing and a combination of plantings to achieve.
Thank you very much, thank you. I'll look forward to hearing how that's going to be dealt with.
And, and we just won't know until.
Because if I, if I, if I'm reading your, if I'm reading the, um, the aerial perspective map, the, the big swath that's there is because they've got transmission lines coming to that, right there, going north, going, I guess it's east and west. So there's already, oh, a, a standing set of high-tension, I don't know if they're called high-tension wires anymore, but what I used to call high-tension wires. So, so they're just simply finding a node and they're putting a node, a transmission, or, or, I'll be interested in here if this is redundancy and what's, how is this going to, there was a language in there about improving the uptime or redundancy in this area. I'll be interested in hearing how that is because it's being, it looks like it's being connected to an already existing pathway of high-tension ones or high-capacity ones.
Right, any other comments, questions?
I had a follow-up from, uh, actually, following up on your comment of, um, so, if I understand what you were saying in terms of the site plan review, what triggers that is, is the modifications to the entrance, um, to the site from the road. Is there any way that they wouldn't need that modification? And if, and if they found a way not to do that modification, are they, then, would there be no site, site plan review?
Correct. If there were no change proposed to the entrance, then no site plan would be required. And that's why we wanna work with the conditions to make sure that we take that into account, and so we can figure that out.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I'll open the public hearing and ask for the applicant's presentation, please. And as a reminder, you have ten minutes, please state your name and general location of residency for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Stephen Brooks, representing Dominion Energy Virginia Siting and Permitting Team. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for hearing our proposed project, uh, presentation tonight. I'll start by saying we're gonna go through seven major pieces of this, one of which is the need. We'll outline the details of this project, the sighting and why we chose this area, and specifically under the high-tension wires, the setbacks, landscape. The setbacks, landscaping will cover in more detail. And then the sound will have my colleague, Mr. Tom's props join me here momentarily and then we'll provide a summary. Proposed substation project that we're, uh, calling Walnut Creek would be supporting a stronger electric grid. And here is essentially offering, uh, support towards the winter line, winter emergency line rating. Uh, it should be known that even though Dominion Energy Virginia is not necessarily the primary service provider in this area. Will also provide support for C VAC. This location is ideal by co-load acating with existing high tension or high transmission line facilities. This right away in particular houses two lines, one of which is a five hundred KV line, the other is one hun- one hundred and fifteen KV line. That's the voltage at which this substation would operate. With most substations, we do not require public water or sewer. Of course, there's none on site, we're just pointing that out for record. Substation need, we always talk about the need of these. Before we consider anything here, we do consider what the need is for the greater bulk electric system. And in this case, we're talking about contingencies for voltage variation. And so what we're doing is, uh, supporting PJM's identification of that possible voltage drop variation. For those unaware, PJM is Pennsylvania, Jersey and Maryland, but it's the regional transmission operator for which there's approximately seventeen. Utility providers such as Dominion Energy Virginia, in which there's both import and export of energy. Through the bulk electric system such as these high voltage transmission lines. In this case, if a voltage drop violation were to occur, it would cause failures in other Dominion facilities as well. Quickly speaking to the merits of the project, this is a project, uh, excuse me, on screen, this photo is representative of this substation in the application. We have backbones here. I appreciate Mr. Barnes pointing those out earlier. In height, we've proposed that these would be approximately seventy-five feet in height. Question was just raised, talking about the fence, this is the same specification of twelve foot fence here. And then lastly, just generally speaking, but this is the similar type of equipment that would be proposed for this facility. One thing I'll just quickly point out, you'll notice here that this too is a site that's located within existing transmission right away that Dominion operates. I'd already captured earlier that this is a corridor that currently operates both five hundred KV lines and one hundred and fifteen KV lines. This assemblage of these three properties in the application allows for this current construction, but also a potential future build out at two thirty KV. If Dominion Energy Planning or the previously referen- referenced PJM determines that need. Those electric, electrical equipment footprint, though, I want to point out, has been minimized as much as possible. And I'll talk about that here in a moment with, with respect to setbacks. The ultimate goal, though, is to be completed with construction should the approval be granted, but to be completed by the end of twenty twenty-five. Speaking of setbacks, we start with the front, Old Lynchburg Road is the roads of the, uh, combined parcel areas frontage. So with respect to that, seventy-five feet is the, is the, uh, minimum front setback in the ordinance. We're offering eighty to the fence line. And then for the two side setbacks, on the east, we have forty-five feet offered to the fence, to the property line. And then to the west, greater than one hundred and fifty feet. In the rear, which predominantly is occupied by the existing transmission corridor, although it's thirty-five feet. Again, we've offered forty feet of setback. Quick picture here is showing that the red line represents that one hundred and fifteen KV line. I'll stress that it's not one single line, but rather a, a multitude of overhead lines. So for pictorial reference, reference only, just pointing this out here. And this is our inspiration for why we chose to cite this property here, or cite this substation here as proposed. It directly lines up with the operational voltage of the proposed substation. And referencing again back to the backbones, they too line up underneath this one hundred and fifteen KV, uh, transmission line that Dominion operates. Speaking about landscaping, I'll start and work my way around the property. Here again, we have a proposed front setback of seventy-five feet, while our closest security fence, twelve feet in height. Would, would be approximately eighty feet separated from Old Lynchburg Road. We're proposing in this frontage area, in that area highlighted in green, supplementation of four rows of trees to include these species listed. Uh, the variety of heights and variety of, um, growth, uh, be it, um, evergreen or deciduous trees. And then additionally planting Fortunes Ossmanthus, Northern Bayberry. And then in the gray area, looking for opportunities to supplement further with landscaping there. All of these species that I'm gonna cover here were based on, uh, review of the Albemarle County planning list. This is the western property line adjacent to our stormwater management pond that's being proposed. Here again, much of the same, but also looking again for opportunities to supplement within the residual area between the grading, which is the limits of disturbance. And then finding opportunities to the property line to plant rows of these species listed. Focusing now on the eastern side, side setback being twenty-five feet, we have forty fi- forty-five feet to this fence line. These four rows are including Arbivady, which have, uh, one moment, please. Arbivady have, are at mature growth height, approximately forty to sixty feet in growth. Eastern red cedar, thirty to fifty feet. We have a selection of Virginia pine that's in there growing fifty to seventy feet, yes, and then a swamp white oak at fifty to sixty feet. And that's all within this area. The next area I want to talk about, which is a slight change in modification. We did have a conversation with the adjacent property owners at Mountainside Arts about how to further supplement this next area. Which is in this area, and we've already heard conversation here from commissioners and from staff, I appreciate that. But one thing that's slightly different is we're offering an entirety of series of Fortunes Ossmanthus at a closer spacing and doubling up those numbers. Uh, previously in the application, we had a Northern Bayberry that was in there. And so in, in effect, we're offering a more robust row of Fortunes Ossmanthus, which have expected growth heights of twenty feet. That in conjunction with the grading, being that the pad grade is approximately six feet lower. Uh, than the grade at which these plantings would be installed. We hope that, uh, the commission would find favor with our offer of this in landscaping supplementation. I had mentioned earlier, I would have my colleague, Mr. Thomas Props, to speak about sound and welcome him to the lectern.
Tom Props, Dominion Energy, um, since speaking with our planning commission, our planning group. They've identified that the transformer size to be used for this application would be our two hundred twenty-four MVA auto transformers. See a picture on both the diagram represented there. According to our current spec, that's limited to seventy-five D B A at the unit when measured in the factory. Um, we plotted out the sound attenuation on the right hand of the screen. And you'll see that at the property, at the, at the fence, it's about forty-five point five D B A. And at the property line, we'd be looking at approximately forty-two D B A. Uh, we plotted this all the way up to the nearest residence and there would be about thirty-two. Uh, for reference, on the left side of the screen, you'll see Oshio graphic, just to correlate D B A sound levels with, uh, common herd experiences. Uh, these sound levels do not account for the beneficial impacts of the screening plantings. We've been discussing the anti-vibration pads that we place under the transformers, um, and the low, and the low sound fans that we specify as part of standard for all our units.
Thank you.
Reminder, you have about probably thirty seconds left.
Okay. I will skip forward, but, uh, we had provided for some, um, just wanted to mention quickly some additional steps take, taken as we perceive it. To be, uh, beneficial to this project, project, one of which is that.
Go ahead and finish your thought.
Okay. Tried to acknowledge property owner concerns both in person and virtually. We've developed photo site simulations for the project that were part of the application. And then, um, updated the landscaping plan, additional rows of plantings were possible. And, uh, committed to here, uh, methods to minimize, minimize transformer operational sound levels.
Great.
I've got a few more slides, but respecting the time, thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you'll just stay up there for a second, we may have some questions for you.
Of course, yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, with that, any questions from the commission? Ms. Firehawk?
No.
Very thorough.
Arizona?
None at this point. Not yet.
No.
Yeah, when you say Arbivady, um, do you mean Thujox and Talus? Do you mean w- white cedar?
Uh, Green Giant, uh, directly from the, um, Albemarle planning list.
Okay, I, I would, I would, I would encourage not that. Um, I find that those are kind of like weak wooded and it's a hybrid non-native species. It's, um, I mean, my preference would be for Thujox and Talus. If you can look that up, it's, you know, eastern white cedar. But, but anyway, just.
Okay, please.
Just, just as a note.
Thanks, Commissioner Bivin, question?
Chair, could you, and thank you for your presentation. Could you, so, so could you talk a little bit about sort of what this allows you to do? I think I heard that, could you go over what are the existing, um, the existing capacities on the line there and what's the po- potential? You said something that put the, the potential that you might be able to upgrade it.
Are you speaking about the operational?
I'm talking about the power coming over the lines, those transmission lines. So what's coming across the property now? How mu- how much is coming?
Oh, excuse me, um, one moment, did I accidentally escape that off the screen or shall I re-initiate the presentation?
I think you said something like it was one twenty-five and that you had the possibility to go to five hundred.
Oh, no, sir.
Two thirty KV future build out?
The slide, the slide with the red and green line, okay.
Now, a- as you're thinking that through, if you get, so you, you talk about that you're trying to increase, um, you're trying to increase. Coverage during winter periods, but are you also looking at, we've been having some, there are summer resources also. So really, what do you, what do, what's the upside for the network by doing this?
It's, it's reliability and strengthening of the, uh, bulk electric system. That was one of the things that I hoped I'd brought forward earlier in the presentation, but the slide I'm hoping to get on screen.
There's, there's your guru right there.
Yes, please. So on this particular slide, the top left of that image, there is, uh, so again, recapturing. The red line is one hundred and fifteen thousand volts.
Okay.
The green line is five hundred thousand volts.
That's, okay, five hundred thousand?
Yes, sir. And so the lines that you see exiting the sheet to the top. Lead to a station that Dominion Energy operates called Sherwood Substation in the city of Charlottesville.
And where's the green going?
The green is a much larger line that, uh, runs many, many miles, well beyond the county limits, yes.
That goes over the mountain or something like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me just, as, as a refreshment, I think, I don't know if it was you, but at some point, did somebody from the company come to us to talk about upgrading the Hollymead? Station or Hollymead facilities there?
That was a previous application.
Was that you?
No, sir.
It was somebody else?
Yes.
Was it doing something similar by saying don't, at, at Hollymead, so putting in enhancing the, enhancing the, um. The scope, the scope, the, enhancing the, the capacity there so that it would provide a bit more stability?
Most likely. And I, I don't know the merits of that case, though, but.
But that was, but it was, it was Dominion doing something like that?
Yes, sir. Yes, go ahead.
So just to be helpful, it seems like over the last sort of few months, we've been hearing a lot of infrastructure enhancements. Either down in Scottsville or up in Hollymead, and I think we're seeing something more recent.
I'm sorry.
Chair, I don't know.
He, he's, I'm sorry, he's, uh, with Dominion Energy as well. Forgive me for.
Okay, does he want to speak to my question?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Felix Sarfo Kintaka, External Affairs Manager of Dominion Energy. Um, yes, sir, the Hollymead project was a couple of years ago, that was a build out. Basically, that project, as this project, is to keep the lights on. Um, we had several storms over the last couple of years. I directly was in contact with Board of Supervisor members and the county executive in regards to reliability, to make sure that we're keeping the lights on. And these projects, all these projects are part of the PGM system to help keep the lights on. Cause we want to make sure that we're keeping the lights on and that folks are able to do the things that they need to do for their homes and their businesses.
Okay, so thank you, sir. So, so what I'm, what I'm hearing then is that this is part of a, this is part of a desire to strengthen the network, Dominion's network here. And so this is just one more. Sorry, Chair. And I'm gonna come up.
Sorry, I'm not even William Clark, I'm with Dominion Energy, I'm the project manager on the project.
Okay.
So this project in.
Did you say your name? I don't know if we heard.
William Clark, yeah. So the point of this project is basically we have, we have a voltage problem between, um, Doom's five hundred station and our Bremos, uh. This isolation point would be to keep the voltage on in the Charlottesville area. If we go under voltage on one side, but this is the isolation point to make sure the voltage stays up in this area. That kind of helped?
That, 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 you know, that helps a lot because, you know, remember what people think, they think about this is my backyard and so this is, this is affecting me in my backyard. And when I'm, what you're helping me to understand, what you're helping other people, is that this is, this is part of a, a bigger network. And trying to bring some stability to the network.
Correct.
And some of us who've been here for a while know what it's, what it is like when the power goes out.
Understood.
Because of, be, just because of our wood nature.
Yeah.
So you, you, you have, when you take something out because the tree's coming down, you're stuck for a good, well, you and I, you're stuck for a good.
We're living in the seventeen hundreds.
Yeah, we're living in seventeen hundreds, and I really don't want to live in the seventeen, for a whole host of reasons, I don't want to live in the seventeen hundreds. So, okay, that's, I think that's helpful to throw that layer on that. So if you come back to us again, I would advise you just to talk about the, about how this is. Connected to the improvement of your service to our area and not simply for this corner in our area.
Understood.
Wayne, thank you. Commissioner Moore, any questions?
Uh, I was wondering. We could listen for just a moment to the, to the sound of the fluorescent above us here. I've got a decibel meter. It's coming in pretty low, it's coming in the thirties, um, and it's, it's a, um, a consistent sound. And, and I think what we're hearing is like about what you'd hear at the house, except a little higher pitch, uh, from these fluorescent lights. Um, and I'm just wondering about the last piece of your last slide there that you didn't get a chance to, as far as sound mitigation measures. If you can tell me a little bit more about what could be done to make that sound not, uh, quite so present in the home.
Sure, the, uh, the additional. The sound mitigation, mitigation measures that we standardly employ for these transformers are again, low, low, uh, low sound fans. Fans are a source of a lot of the sound con- transferable cooling, as well as, um, vibration dampening pads which we put underneath the units. Uh, the sound for transformers comes from the core inside vibrating at twice the fundamental frequency of the power system. So that generally attenuates as much as, as, as reasonably accomplishable. Um, and again, we're talking about then about forty-two D B A at the property line. And it should also be noted that these values are associated with the maximum output for the nameplate of the transformer, which it will not be running at normally. So normally would be significantly quieter than that, as well as these are the maximum allowable outputs from a transformer and the manufacturers. Produce less than that when they actually produce the units, just to make sure they're within spec. And it should also be noted that these transformers will not be included in the initial build of the transform or the station. The station when built will just be a switching station, so it would simply be switches, breakers and basically non-sound producing equipment.
Is the, uh, the, the, um. The, the, uh, decaying arcs there, is that with the mitigation measures sort of already factored in?
So, no, that's not. So that, that's, yeah, that, they would, it would, the attenuation of the sound would be even greater once you account for the geography of the site and the pads. And the screen, the screening planting would reduce it further.
Thanks.
Just, uh, go off to that for one second. Um, staff, can you remind us what the county ordinance says about sound at the property boundary?
Uh, maximum sound level, you want the receiving in the, from the receiving zone in rural areas and residential. Daytime is sixty D B A, nighttime is fifty-five D B A.
Got it, thank you.
I did have a, a quick follow-up question, since it's on the screen, uh, just to, more about vibration dampening pads. Uh, the reason I ask about sound is it's related to the field I work in and we've had to put in frankly, like mass loaded vinyl and even brick walls to stop. Loud concerts from bothering neighbors. Um, so what, what are the damp, damping pads? Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Um, as, they're like a rubberine type material made for look, taking the load of the transformer. Other than that, I mean, like, I don't really know a lot of great deal about them. Um, as, they're like a rubberine type material made for look, taking the load of the transformer. Other than that, I mean, I, I don't really know a lot of great deal about them and material lines.
All right. I just had a couple of quick questions. One is, you mentioned, and I don't know if Commissioner Bivens, you touched on this, but the 230 kilo, I think I saw KV future build out at the beginning, I think you mentioned that. Can you talk a little more about that? Yeah, right? Right there.
Right.
Assemblage and parcels allows for this current construction, but also a future build out. What is that gonna look like? Just ballpark.
Well, honestly, it is represented in the, what we call general arrangement within the application package. We're showing the entirety of the fence build out, which would reflect all of the equipment, whether it's at the, I'll call it the half that's being built for the switching station portion or that future equipment build out that could be operating at that 230,000 volts.
So we wouldn't see a diff, a change in the scheme if you went to 230 volts?
No, sir. This is representing a full build out as proposed.
Got it. Thank you. Can you get a slide 10 real quickly so I can remember what I was gonna ask you? Uh, I think we already got it. You were talking about the adjacent property boundary and how you beefed that up a bit.
Yes, sir.
So when you look at this and you look at the grading plan, I couldn't see anywhere on the grading plan retaining walls. Is that right?
No, sir. There's no retaining walls proposed.
Which I get is a way to save money. You don't want to put retaining walls over, but theoretically, to get a buffer that was consistent with the northern side of this eastern buffer, would there be a way to slide project a little bit to the west and south, even though you might likely gain a small retaining wall between this facility and the stormwater management plant? Wondering if there's a way to increase that buffer size?
I'm afraid not. The layout as we've proposed it, and I hope that I'd outlined that well enough with the setbacks. We've exceeded the setbacks. We've condensed the site as much as possible. And so the layout that we've got so far as where the fence line is located is what is necessary for the electrical service or, excuse me, the equipment as proposed.
Okay. So you're meeting, I never realized you're meeting the setbacks.
Yes, sir.
My question was, can you exceed the setbacks in an easy way? Sounds like there isn't a way to do that without potentially building a wall.
Well, as I understand it, the setbacks are to the fence.
Yeah, no, you're meeting them. I'm just, you're exceeding them in a couple of other places. So I was wondering if on that southern side adjacent to the property owner, there would be a way to also exceed the setback, but I'm, I'm asking for something outside the ordinance.
Is that, Mr. Barnes, is that pointer available to me as presenter? The laser pointer you'd used? I see it, I think.
Oh, there you go.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Trying to get the pointer up. May I ask you to restate the question?
I can see the pointer now. Sure. So I'm looking at, maybe it's easier to look at, can't see my screen, but I'm looking at the old, the entire site plan.
I agree.
And I'm looking from northeast, southwest, kind of cutting a section.
Okay.
And you've got steep slopes right against the adjacent eastern boundary. Right? Maximizing the slopes there. Then you're coming across a probably a level pad for the equipment. Then you've probably got a slope that's two to one, takes you down to a stormwater facility.
Right.
And I'm just wondering if there's a, a way, when the site plan is done, to slide everything a little bit to the southwest, thereby allowing additional buffer to match the buffer on the northern edge of this with the buffer on the sou- southern edge where you're.
There you go.
Okay. Part of the challenge becomes that we've already looked at the, this 500 KV line that's in operation and is overhead.
I see.
We must maintain clearance from that wire to that grade.
Got it.
And this is at the threshold, we're constrained on a lot of things, both visual and also above ground here.
That sounds understandable. I didn't take into consideration that existing line, so that's good. That's helpful.
I'm glad I've had the question then. Thank you.
That was all I had. Thank you. So we'll ask for public comment now. We'll go through that. And then you'll have an opportunity to come back up and address any comments the public may have. As a general reminder to the public, you'll have a chance to speak once and you'll have three minutes. When the light turns yellow, you'll have one minute left. And with that, I think we have a sign up sheet. We'll start with that. James McLaughlin is the first on the sign up sheet.
My name is James McLaughlin. My wife and I own 2413 Old Lynchburg Road, the adjoining eastern property to the proposed Dominion substation. We purchased this property in 2018 in pursuit of what we call the Albemarle County dream. A beautiful, peaceful and quiet country lifestyle surrounded by natural beauty and great neighbors. We knew the Hoffman family directly next door for over 10 years prior to our purchase of this property. And we cherished having them, the Battertons and the Peñas as our neighbors. It has been a difficult thing to witness their homes being demolished over the past couple of months, a preview of the impending disruption we will be forced to endure. Rachel, my wife, was inspired to start her own small business, Mountainside Arts, utilizing this beautiful property to teach art and nature appreciation to a wide variety of community members. Her business is incorporated at the state level, licensed within the county, complete with an official home occupation certificate, but is to our knowledge not included or recognized by Dominion in their application. We asked the planning commission to include as official conditions of approval, the important issue setback of setback distances and limits of disturbance, more robust screening, a sound study, and to include and recognize Mountainside Arts as a small business located within the adjoining property impacted by this application. We are also acting, asking the county to grant us at least two development rights for our 10 acre parcel in the event that we need to build other dwellings to escape the visual and sonic impact of the substation. We ask for a minimum of 75 feet setback from our property line to the limits of disturbance in an effort to protect our existing mature tree line and to better buffer the visual and sonic impacts of the construction in operation. We ask for more robust screening, specifically along the approximately 50% of our shared eastern property line. Ironically, the area where the existing design brings it the closest to our property. The current landscape plan calls for planting 12 inch to 24 inch shrubs, which at maximum growth, it is stated will be six to 10 feet tall when mature, according to the Landscape Details document. Dominion is in the process of purchasing three lots on the adjacent west side. The planned purchase of this land would seem to enable the entire site to be moved setback significantly further from our property line. Dominion stated that they have no plans for actually using these lots. They will simply buy them and let them sit. We request Dominion provide a sound study and documentation in relation to the noise generated by both the phase one substation equipment and for the inevitable phase two expansion where noise generating transformers will be deployed permanently. We understand that the infrastructure needs of the county and the Commonwealth are vitally important and do not supersede the needs of any given individual property owner. But we would ask that the impact on our quiet enjoyment of our home and the pursuit of our livelihoods be given consideration here. We see it as the duty of the planning commission and Dominion to ensure that this substation doesn't unnecessarily intrude on us. And Dominion certainly has the wherewithal to be able to address our concerns and accommodate us. The Hoffman's purchased their property for 325,000. Dominion just purchased it for 2.8 million. The Battertons, 111,000. Dominion gave them 1.6 million. The Peñas purchased their property for $39,000. Dominion just gave them 1.7 million. They certainly have the resources to accommodate our requests. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, let me draw. Thank you. Uh, let's see, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this from the public? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone online?
No, don't, no, sir.
Okay, thank you. Would you, the applicant, like to come up and address any of those questions? Yes, ma'am. I think you know the drill. State your name for the record, please.
Hi, everybody. I'm Rachel. I'm Hannah McLaughlin, resident at 2413 Old Lynchburg Road and proud, proud owner of Mountainside Arts. I wasn't planning to speak because I'm sick. I have shingles from the stress of this. I've been out of school for the last two weeks. I'm not going to speak to you. I'm gonna take this three minutes to ask you to open the email that I sent to you all at 3:59 and take these next two minutes and show me that you've read it. And if you can't see clearly or you can't do that during this meeting, at least look at the attachments that I sent you. Because as an artist and a teacher, I believe that a photograph is worth 10,000 words and 10 million statements from lawyers. So please, please, before you make a final recommendation, I beg all of you to read my email, do the right thing, stand up against Dominion Energy and help save Mountainside Arts. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? And seeing none online?
No, sir.
All right. Would the applicant like to address any of the comments that have been raised? No need to, just opportunity if you want it. Okay. All right. Thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Who would like to kick us off?
So I do have a, a follow-up question for the applicant. So there was a comment that was, it was different from what we heard in terms of the sizes of, of the plantings that are being proposed. Can you address that, please?
Mr. Krantz, can I ask for clarification? We, we had during the presentation suggested that we were updating that one area, I believe Mr. Missile brought up.
So the information that was brought up was from, from a previous planting plan?
Yes. Our, our proposal has changed since last week as to the landscaping specific to the Fortune's Ossmanthus being the primary plant to be offered. Those species were told are mature growth rate of 20. And so we had previously proposed two species. We removed the one in favor of solely offering that Fortune's Ossmanthus for that particular side that we talked about, whereas grading and the discussion previously. Thank you.
Right. Any other discussion? Mr. Firehawk?
I just, I just have a comment. You know, I, I do think it's unfortunate that this site does seem to have impact on the neighbors, you know, and I think it's pretty hard to cite these without impacting some neighbors, unfortunately. I mean, we have a similar kind of substation in my neighborhood. I also think that the applicant did do their best to answer our questions about how much they had tried to change the landscaping, whether they could or couldn't shift the site further to your questions, Chair. So I, I, it feels to me like sort of the maximum has been done and I understand that we're still needing more clarification in the screening plan. I looked up the new vegetation that they proposed. It does look pretty thick and robust and doesn't seem to be subject to pest or diseases, which is good because it will last. So, you know, where I sit is, it just seems to me it's a necessary project based on where it is. And, you know, I hope that they will continue to work with the neighbor to make sure that they're minimizing their impact, but I don't really see much more that we can come up with this evening that would make this less intrusive at this point.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, and I, I agree with the comments that Commissioner Firehawk just made. I guess the one point that I would add that where we can build a little bit more confidence in what we will receive is in the conditions. So I think the conditions can be bolstered by specific comments on lighting, on acoustics and, and the implementation of, of the new buffer.
Chair.
Point. Thanks. Weber?
I don't have anything to add to that.
All right.
No, I just second Karen's comments. This is an unfortunate situation and I, I feel for the people involved and.
Thank you. Commissioner Bivens?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not gonna go on as I, as I want to do. But I will say, I will ask that for the recommendations that are there, that if we can tie them as, as explicitly as possible to the ordinances. That way, it takes, it puts staff in a position that they don't have to be solemnant. But they can just say, this is the situation that we're asking you to follow, Dominion. And, and would you also, you know, do this? And I will just, you know, as a, as a Dominion, you know that you have deep connections to this region. You know that your CEO has deep connections to this region. And so I would just ask you to try and be good neighbors when you can, and I'm not saying you're not, but you know, just try and be good neighbors. I think it would help, help you all in a way that I think would be beneficial when you come back to us again.
Great. And Commissioner Moore?
I do appreciate the need for this, and I do appreciate the, the, the sort of bridging there between the two other stations. And the need to keep the grid here stable in the event that, that situations arise, as they're gonna do at some point. You know, we talk a lot about resiliency and I think sort of having stable electricity in the Charlottesville region, southern part of the county is obviously a huge part of that. You know, there's, there's a lot of neighbors nearby. There's one, obviously, that's much closer who, who spoke this evening. And I do, it's very rare in, in a meeting like this that we actually have sort of a, a show and tell and, and like the, the 120 hertz sound right above our heads right now at about 30 decibels or so is kind of like what, like sitting on the deck might be, minus the, the mitigation measures in phase two. With the mitigation measures in phase two, it's hard to know. It will surely pass the county's sound ordinance because that's much higher. But I just, I don't know how to bookmark it or dog ear it or whatever, that that would be really annoying for, you know, like to, to be constant. And so I don't know how to, I mean, I, I know what our sound ordinance is. But again, I just, I don't know quite what the answer is.
Nathan, I'm reminded of when, not so long ago, at Yancy Mills, there was, there was an imperceptible, like this, this sound that was coming from Yancy Mills and it was driving everyone in the area crazy. And, and it was, it was a sound that was so small that people could barely hear it, but it was, it was, you know, incredibly annoying to a lot of people. Finally, you know, Yancy Mills figured out exactly what the problem was and was able to solve it. But it just goes to show that, I mean, that, that the, the decimal level of a sound doesn't necessarily doesn't accommodate its impact sometimes.
Yeah, thanks for the, the plus one there. And, you know, again, I don't, I don't know that that makes it a showstopper. It just, it's one of those things, though, that's, that's, hopefully can be mitigated effectively.
So what we're saying here, so, so listen to what we're saying. So we, we spent the early part of the afternoon talking about how we want to upfit the development area. While I'm not dismissing that this is a rural issue, but the last time we did this, it was in Hollymead. And so what we're talking about is how do we live in a space that's going to have additional technology in it, that's going to have different, different, certain infrastructure in that area that works for everyone? And someone's not gonna be happy. And I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to mitigate it that way. But if we're talking about making this as dense as we believe it should be, then we're gonna be having these kind of conversations all. The one that we had this earlier this evening about, about the convenience center is a type of nuisance, as the buzzing is a type of nuisance. This is, I think, part of the thing I'm gonna, I'm wrestling with is how do we live in a forward-facing, at a forward-facing time and handle the nuisances? And do that with grace. If in fact, we want this to be a more dense place. If we don't want it to be a dense place, then we can all, you know, not go to 1700s, but perhaps like the early 1900s, the early 1900s. You know, so this, these are the kind of conversations I think we're gonna have, and I think is, I think from now on out.
Yeah, I, I'll just add a couple of thoughts to what's already been said. One is I really appreciated the comment about the big picture and keeping in mind the big picture and your idea and your, the way you phrased, this is a part of a larger network that ties together and works together. I think we're hearing that it exceeds the sound ordinance. I think we're hearing that it, it meets the minimum existing.
It doesn't, it doesn't, sorry, it doesn't exceed the sound ordinance, but there's a sound nonetheless, is what I was trying to say.
Yes, yes, yes. My point was just that it's below the county, below the county cutoff. Sorry.
Excuse the minimum.
Yep. That, as a reminder, you know, we talk about resilience. We're gonna be talking about resilience. And resilience requires infrastructure investment and this is something that. something that is contributing to that. That I would underscore again, what we talked about initially, which was the conditions and making sure the conditions are tight and objective. And, you know, clearly, I don't know whether this will or will not require a site plan, but it functionally shouldn't make any difference. Regardless.
Say that again, Chair.
Well, they were mentioning that the relocation of the access road requires a site plan, but if they choose not to relocate the access road, they can do without a site plan, but there's still our conditions of approval that need to be approved by staff. And then the last thing is just a reminder, we're recommending or not recommending to the Board of Supervisors, who will have a final say in this, correct?
Correct.
So with all of that, is anybody interested in making a motion?
I am. I did have the note already about the sound decibels and the county standards, but Commissioner Carazano, you were saying something, another condition that you had in mind or something else you wanted to strengthen in the conditions?
So the, the three that I was, that I was thinking about were, were the sound, the lighting, because there is no, they did not do, they, they haven't done a lighting study on this. So it would be required to do a lighting study and they would meet, have to meet the the county ordinance on, on lighting. And then the third would be to, to have a condition on the buffer and to have that clear. I'm not, I know that they have amended it, but unless it's a condition that can change, particularly if there's no site plan. And I know right now there's supposed to be a site plan.
I thought, I thought this condition, Planning Director's approval of the final landscape plan is what he it is a condition.
So that staff can be clear, make sure we understand what it is you're asking us to do so that we can do that when we go to the Board of Supervisors. The note I have taken is that we'll work on conditions to include the requirement that it meet the requirements of 417, which are the lighting regulations, 418, which is the noise regulations, and landscaping to reflect the revised information submitted by the applicant at this meeting, or as may be necessary to meet the screening requirements of Section 32797, which is the ordinance. And then also coordinating that with the language of these conditions with or without a site plan being required on the property. That's the notes I've taken.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And before the motion is made, could you put up the motion slide, please?
You get all that, Karen?
Yeah. I might have, I might have to have some more help from Mr. Fritz because he went really fast through one of those.
To say everything he just said.
I can do it again.
Okay, can I? May I actually just cite what he just listed? As it did, it did comport with how I would have worded it.
What I would suggest is if you could, I believe you had three additional conditions that you wanted to recommend?
I was, mine were add that the applicant must be in compliance with the county's sound ordinance 418 to not exceed 60 dB a daytime and 55 dB a at night. That the landscaping plan must comport with Section 32797 and something along lines of they have to meet to and make sure that it's compliant with their new designs. And what was the other one? I'm sorry, the lighting?
The noise, did you say noise?
Already, that was the first one I said. And that they need to conduct a lighting study and make sure that it's compliant with county ordinance 417.
Correct.
So what I would suggest is, excuse me, making the motion, one of the motions on the screen with the additional comments that you just made.
Okay. Alright, I move to recommend approval of SP 2023 00017 Walnut Creek Substation with conditions as recommended in the staff report with the following additional details. For condition number four, if that was the right one, I'm sorry. The compliance with the county's sound ordinance, Section 41, 418 is met so that sound decibels not exceed 60 dB a in the daytime and 55 dB a at night. That they meet the county's, that they conduct a landscaping study and that they be required to meet the county's lighting ordinance in Section 417. And that they complete a new landscaping plan to be approved by the Director of Development that reflects the new enumerated conditions on the site and adequately protects the neighbors from disturbance and complies with Section 32797.
A second.
Awesome. Any further discussion? Do we have the roll?
Yes. Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Thank you, staff. And thank you, applicant, and members of the public. All right, we will move on now to committee reports. Are there any committee reports that commissioners would like to provide? I know that we have a joint CAC meeting coming up on the 30th, right? I believe?
Yeah.
So a lot of the CAC meetings were canceled, I think, this month. But are there any reports? Anybody has? Sir?
I have one.
Oh, go for it. Very quiet.
The NPL Tech met last week.
One thing, if I could ask the public to just carry your conversations outside, please? Thank you.
The NPL Tech met last weekend and discussed a lot of the, the smart scale projects. Again, the, the one point that I'll bring is that the Fifth Street Diversion Diamond came in at a significantly higher cost.
Oh, wow.
Higher?
Those diamonds.
Much, much.
Those diamonds.
Ridiculously so.
Ridiculously high. And mainly is because they, I guess, under further study, they realized that they actually had to change the the bridge, so the entire.
Cause of the bridge?
The entire structure, yeah. So not just a, yeah.
Probably just doesn't end at the right spot, you know, after you, a lot of topography there.
So.
A lot.
So it's going back into redesign, I guess the what I would say was a positive, although obviously there's going to be delays, but a positive was that it actually might be cheaper to have a separate bike-ped bridge, which was at one point something that was considered along the side.
That would be nice.
And so that's, I think, I believe that is something that's going to be looked at as it, as it gets repackaged.
Could that maybe also be a separate grant proposal? You know, using infrastructure funds because it's a pedestrian bike bridge now all by itself. The smart scale and all that stuff.
Yeah, I hope that happens because then that, that would give the impetus and the leverage to do the same thing on Avon Street Extended. Because we've been trying to, you know, the, one of the issues there is that the correctional, the correctional center is on the other side of the bridge. And so families who can, obviously they can drive, families who can want to try and walk, but there's nowhere to walk.
Right.
And so over the years, there's been some conversation about, well, can we do what you're suggesting over there, over there? Which would facilitate that whole walkability of that neighborhood from Mill Creek? I think it's called Mill, is it called Mill Creek?
Yeah, that's one of them.
Yeah.
That's many.
Milk, you'd be able to come from Mill Creek all the way into town.
Yeah, that we, and in all the Fifth and Avon planning and look, and making all these improved plans to Avon Street. That's always that, that little, you know, pinch point where we can't get across.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I didn't suggest it.
Yes, you did, yes, you did.
It had been something that I, I think was considered at, at one point, at an earlier point, and it was viewed to be too expensive, but now.
Was that, was that before all this infrastructure money became available, though?
I think what we're really talking about is that trying to get the shared use path on the bridge gets to a certain point where it just doesn't fit. I think we're gonna have to replace the deck.
Right.
And that's what was really driving the huge increase in costs. And that, suppose replacing the whole deck, you might be able to build a separate bridge for less money.
Well, and it was the, the deck and, and they were talking about even the what they called the substructure, which I'm assuming is, so, so it was like a major replacement, so. There were other things, but that was, I think that was the main.
Was there any discussion, maybe, maybe it was, maybe it happened, was there any discussion, this $20 million that the city's giving back because it's not going to do some project, does that impact us at all? Does that impact the county? Is there a nexus to the county in that project? Or is that just?
I don't, I don't recall any discussion on, on the city returning money.
I didn't either, okay.
I don't know if you know anything of that, Mr.
I'm lost. It's probably the Emmett Street Phase Two project.
I don't know. That wasn't discussed.
I, I just, I know when I was on the NPO Tech, there was this whole conversation that one of the reasons this was so good because it may connect up to, you know, the work we're doing from the bridge down to barracks, and I didn't know if it was there'd been this conversation that he's gonna go barracks up, which seemed kind of crazy to me to do.
I, I'll tell you what, I'll work with staff, get that answer to what the project was we're talking about and shoot you all an email.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't think that was discussed in this last week, so maybe that was a previous.
Great, any other reports? No?
That would have been this coming Monday, but they've canceled it because Preservation Pinmont has scheduled their meeting for the exact same time. So they're excusing the members from the historic committee to go to Ivy Creek and attend that other meeting if they so choose. But they will not be conducting any business, blah, blah, not a meeting.
All right, thanks. Review the Board of Supervisors meeting, we got a little bit of that.
Um, thank you, yeah, and actually you got the highlights because there were no private or CTA applications that went to the board on 16th, so you heard our our summation of their discussion about the growth management policy and, and the land use tools for the development area we just talked about right then. Um, the other thing is, if you don't mind.
Gotcha, you don't have it set right. There in a moment.
I'm not gonna be there, I'm not gonna be able to get there?
Presentation, is it, is it in present?
Just my screen, but anyhow, apparently I can't show you the piece of paper that I put in front of you, which is what I wanted to talk to you guys about.
The schedule?
Yeah, it's our, it's a schedule for the next. Oh, how nifty. Okay. Thank you so much. So this sheet you have in front of you. Again, there are 10 topics that we want to cover with you. This is the schedule for the first five. You'll see that some of these things have two dates in front of it for the Planning Commission. We're gonna have a similar format, you see in the, the development area land use category there, we're meeting tonight, of course, 1022, we'll be back to you on November 12th to follow up with the actions component of it. For rural land use, rural area land use will be coming to you on November 19th. And again, on December 10th. We'll also be talking to you on December 12th about the environmental stewardship. On the 21st, that's going to be a special meeting. It's the third week of the month. And that will be dedicated solely to transportation. And then finally, at the end of the month, we will be bringing you a chapter on parks, recreation and open space on the 28th. You see beside them, I have the times for the work sessions that will be meeting. And also, I've tried to put the board work sessions in that last column. And I think one of the things we really try to work here in the the, the dates that we're setting is to try and ensure there's enough time that when you guys have your discussions, we can try and get that information to the board so that they can hear what you all discussed.
Let's get a quick schedule clarification. On November 19th, we only meet at 6:00 PM, not 4:00, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
That is, again, that would be a specially called meeting, and that'll be the only thing we're talking about is the rural area land use policy.
Thank you so much.
Um, will not be, I will not be able to attend that one on the 19th.
I think we've got you down on the, our sheet already.
Yeah.
Not attending.
And I will not be at the 17th either on December.
Okay.
I have a conference and a trip abroad.
Okay. And, you know, as we get a clearer understanding of how this, we have a schedule for all 10 chapters. But we decided to give you the first five right now. I think we'll see how things are going with the board and the discussion, and then try and publish the rest of the dates next. You know, after we've gone through a couple of chapters, make sure that this is working. Let's put, put those, commit, trying to commit to those dates right now. They may be both.
Great, I, just one, I think you said this, you said December 12th for the environmental stewardship, December 17th, right?
I meant to say the 17th.
Perfect. And also, I know this is a list of AC44 related topics. 1029, we have the joint city-county planning commission meeting, which we'll talk about in a second.
Fair enough, thank you.
I know they're not part of this, but, and then 1030, we have the CAC joint meeting, right?
Yeah, the joint meeting of the CAC, again, it's a, one of the public
Yeah.
meetings.
So I will have a question for counsel in a minute about adjourning this to the next date, but adjourning the planning commission the next day. But one question I had, I think, was, would help.
We need to know. Mr. Herrick, you want to help me with this? We just need to know how many planning commission members are going. If there's more than two that are going to go, I need to list a special meeting on the website.
This is for the joint meeting or?
So, so the all, all CAC meeting, there's some question as to how many members of the Board of Supervisors, how many members of the Planning Commission are attending that. The board clerk has already taken care of noting that as a special meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Ms. Schaefer was just inquiring as to whether we needed to note that as a special meeting of the Planning Commission as well. That would be based on how many commissioners were interested in attending and participating in the all CAC meeting on the 30th.
Thank you.
On October 30th.
How many are planning to attend by raise of hand? Yep, so it's.
Okay, so if we could note that then as a special meeting of the Planning Commission as well.
And do we, in that meeting, I remember one, a year or two ago, Donna Price actually turned it over to the chair, or to, I was the vice chair, I guess, to call a meeting. Do we do that at that?
That's correct, and, and I'm working with, with Allison Rabel in our community engagement office to work together to have a script so the board calls to order, the planning commission calls to order, and then all the CACs get called to order as well. So that'll be scripted out.
I like scripts. That's great, that's awesome. Yeah.
Thank you.
29th is just city-county.
It's a city-county.
Yep, city-county planning commission.
I just threw five on my counter, but I don't really know.
It's 5:30.
Okay.
And did we land on a two-hour duration? I, I still have like six hours on my invitation, I think, or something like that. Yeah. I have, no, all kidding aside, I think I have three and a half hours.
Yeah. I think we're aiming for two.
Okay.
Starting at 5:30.
So, three and a half hour meeting. We're having the joint city-county public meeting on resilient, together effort, which is a joint UVA county and city effort for resiliency. We'll be meeting in room 241, right across the hall on the 20, on the 29th at 5:30.
For those that haven't been in 241, please bring your very best loud speaking voices. Please.
Yeah, and one thing I would just encourage everybody, I know that, I think the materials are now available, right?
They are.
Thank you, we've got them.
And I send them to you.
Yeah, I got those, that's great, thanks. And we had a pre-meeting where we talked to staff about what to focus areas, not so much to focus on, but areas that might be most useful to them in terms of discussion points. And with seven of us, if we're all going to be there, and with how many other commissioners, eight?
Eight, I think.
So there's, there's 15 people. I would just make sure that if you can, keep your comments kind of to the point and as concise as possible.
I'm not going to leave for the entire period and just stay home.
No, I'm not suggesting that you're any of the people who might want to focus on that, but.
We all have to stay home.
I'm just trying to encourage us because we want to get as much done and that's why there's three and a half hours.
For Julian?
All right, Commissioner Carazana, I'm sure you have a pithy remark.
If I could believe her, just.
I'm gonna restrain. But for the 30th, what is the schedule for that? On the 30th?
The CAC meeting?
Yeah.
And I'm not sure it's on, it's on the calendar.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't have anything to do with it, sorry.
Can I just double check the January calendar real quick? Can I double check the January calendar real quick?
Can I double check the January calendar real quick? I just wanna make sure we have a a regular planning commission meeting on the fourteenth at six and then work sessions on the twenty-first and twenty-eighth.
You're inquiring about January?
Yeah, we're meeting three Tuesdays in a row, essentially.
Pulling up the schedule right now. Yeah, I mean, at this point, I don't have private sector stuff scheduled in January. I think we're gonna maybe have some, but I've gone ahead and targeted um January fourteenth as a normal meeting we would have, the twenty-first as the transportation topic, which I think will be a, a lengthy one. And so I try to put it. I'm sorry?
Twenty-one's it also at four, the twenty-first?
Yes, ma'am.
And then to answer the earlier question, the all CAC meeting is six P M in the auditorium on October thirtieth.
Thank you. And then finally, um, so in January, yes, we were aiming for fourteenth, twenty-first, twenty-eighth.
Okay.
With the work session being on the latter two.
Yeah.
If, obviously, if I find that we don't have that many um private sector ones, or I can push them to the last meeting, I'll go ahead and cancel that. I do wanna try and keep the twenty-first again for the transportation topic. Figuring there'll be a fair amount of time that you all will need to discuss that one.
So just, just to be clear, the one on the twenty-first said starts at four, and then we'll have another hearing at six o'clock?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll be here for the six, but I can't make the four.
Okay.
We uh canceled the fourteenth. I will be sure to fetch my crying towel.
I appreciate that. It's the spirit which that's a.
The, the January fourteenth meeting at this point is the organizational meeting.
Oh, okay.
And the twenty-first is, is not a regular meeting.
It is not a regular meeting. We would call that one as a special one due to the topic, transportation. And.
I'm one, I'm wondering if the twenty-first ought to be at six o'clock then, if that's a special meeting.
It, it would help.
It's, well, it's a big topic.
Well, then I could attend if it was the six.
Uh, I'm, of course, serve at the pleasure of the board here. I just, transportation, I think, has a chance to be something that you all will want to talk about for some length, and that's why I thought, you know, we're gonna try and cover both policy and actions on that, that particular meeting. And so I think that trying to give yourselves plenty of time to talk about the transportation topic's a good idea.
Why don't we take this offline? We can kind of think through it.
Yeah.
All right.
I could be here at five.
Okay.
But I, I have a meeting till three-thirty and hope well.
And also, and in, in that light, of course, we'll be flexible.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll work on it. Thank you for letting us know. I'm glad we're talking about it now, so we have plenty of time to try and work on the schedule.
Yeah, I mean.
Sounds good. Thank you. It'd be good to have just a comprehensive schedule that includes.
Yeah, I will, I will not make meetings that conflict if I know.
Yeah, this is very helpful. I know this was a heavy lift, so thank you. This is really good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any new or old business? Or items for follow-up? All right, hearing none. Um, so counsel, am I adjourning to the twenty-ninth?
Yes, sir. So on the electronic agenda, at least, it shows October twenty-ninth at five-thirty P M.
Okay, um, so I will adjourn the planning commission until October twenty-ninth at five-thirty P M. Thank you all.
All right, thank you.